Buenas noches. The regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 29th, 2019 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Chair Moore and Director Anthony are out of town attending the National School Boards Association Conference in Washington DC and probably freezing. And as part of the Oregon School Boards Association's advocacy team, met with Oregon's Congressional delegation to lobby for reauthorization and full funding of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. They are watching the meeting on livestream and we will be calling in to vote on items later this evening. Okay, for tonight's meeting, any item that we'll be voting on this evening has been posted as required by state law. The meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. The meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Morton attending all regular Board meetings. Judy, will you raise your hand? There you are. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they will be interpreting and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. Come on up, please use the standing microphone located by the Board Clerk to introduce yourselves. Gracias.
Hola y muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación en español para los que lo precisan, voy a estar ubicado en la parte del fondo de la sala. Muchas gracias.
Maria, gracias a la palabra, soy Maria y voy a estar en la sala de la sala.
Chao, queridos, soy una persona de origen vietnam, si alguien necesita ayuda, por favor se ponga en la sala. Gracias.
Yo soy Ma, soy traductor de español, si alguien necesita ayuda, estoy a mi lado. Yo soy Ma, soy traductor de español, si alguien necesita ayuda, puedo ayudarle.
Thank you all. Okay, Board members, are there any items on our business agenda that we have questions on? This does not include those individual actions listed on tonight's agenda.
Madam Chair, I'm going to, there we go. Madam Chair, I'm going to have a couple of questions and comments on one of the contracts, the Black Parent Initiative contract.
Okay.
It doesn't need to be pulled separate and I'm going to be supporting it, but I want to just, as part of the record.
Thank you. I also would like the audience to be aware that for the resolution, the discussion on resolution to suspend approval of an IGA between the city of Portland through the Portland Police Bureau and Portland Public Schools will be timed certain at 8:25. Okay. Okay, I would like to, as we start our student and public comment, I would like to review our guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the Board. We value your input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to be an active listener without distraction from our electronic devices or papers. Okay, so, Board members and Superintendent, as you know, we'll not respond to comments or questions during public comment. If you want to follow up from, with the Board Office, please contact Ms. Houston or Roseanne Powell, the Board Manager, who is right there. Okay. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials or items that you would like to provide to the Board or the Superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Houston to distribute to the Board and Superintendent. Requests to make public comments should be made ahead of time by contacting the Board Office or checking with Ms. Houston prior to the start of the Board meeting to see if there are spots available. Once the Board meeting has started, we can no longer accept new requests for public comment. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. And during the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. Okay. And, okay, so, we appreciate your input, thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for the student or public comment?
Yes, we have a total of six. Our first two speakers are Mika Schau and Parker Myrus.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, am I first? My name is Parker Myrus, that's M-Y-R-U-S. Good evening, I'm in the eighth grade at Sunnyside Environmental School. It is my belief, and I believe yours as well, that every student should have an equal opportunity to concentrate and learn to the best of their ability. But this, however, can be a hard task when the very thing that they are sitting on is so uncomfortable that causes them back pain. In a survey done at my homeroom in Sunnyside, at, sorry, at Sunnyside Environmental School, 51% of students said that it was painful to sit in their chairs for any duration of time and 29% of students said that it was quite uncomfortable. Although it is something that you may view as rather insignificant, every large thing is made up of a great deal of small things and as something that is used every day for a large portion of the day, I think that it is something that is rather important. We would like to ask for a grant, which you can contact Amy Klenner about, to order 36 Shapes Series Cavalier school chairs, which have proven to be the best for lumbar support. And, there is page three. As well as durable, as they have been implemented at Franklin High School. Okay, and if there is any, any test of durability, it is certainly at Portland Public Schools' largest high school. There is another classroom at Sunnyside which has chairs similar to the ones which I am hoping to gain through this grant. They are seeing great success and they are also a favorite among students. These chairs are a budget-friendly choice and will provide lumbar support. They are constructed from a stainless steel frame, durable floor sliders that eliminate the terrible noise made when they're pulled out and pushed in. Also, as a safety bonus, the design of the chairs discourage leaning back, which can result in head injury. Again, please contact Amy Klenner if you have any questions and she will relay them to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, if I could just request of our student to submit the specific chair model to our Board Manager, thank you. All right. Good evening. Hi. My name is Mika Schau, Schau spelled S-C-H-O-W. And I'm here to comment on school resource officers in Portland Public Schools. I believe that school resource officers should remain in our Portland Public Schools for the safety of our students and to have a safe education while we have our school experience. Firstly, the rise in school shootings has spread fear throughout students in Portland Public Schools and I believe if we have officers stationed inside of our schools, then we will feel much safer in the event of something happening like that. I do recall that there was an event at Franklin where some student had a gun, I'm not sure if it was true or not, but I believe that if something like that can come this close to home, we should have SROs in our Portland Public Schools. Second, drug exchange amongst school, among students throughout the hallways and on campus is something that is very real in Portland Public Schools. And with officers, I hope that maybe that can be controlled and the drug use of students can decline. Also, having SROs in schools fosters a good relationship between students and the community. And I think that having this relationship between officers and our schools is important because in the rise of student activism regarding police brutality, the relationship between our police officers and our students has been damaged. And by having officers in our schools, then maybe that, that relationship can be mended and the trust can be restored. Also, let it be known that SROs are there to represent civic law and not to enforce school discipline, as that misunderstanding can be heard very commonly among students. I believe hearing all voices, including quiet ones, should be heard during the decision-making process for decisions like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next we have Beth Kavanaugh and Nate Query.
My name is Beth Kavanaugh, C-A-V-A-N-A-U-G-H. I'm an Abernathy parent and a member of the Racial Common Unity District-wide Parent Group. I'm here today to ask that the values guiding Flow Analytics work include adherence to the racial equity policy to address the historical and ongoing impact of the current system to our communities of color and students in poverty. Additionally, I'm requesting clear communication with the community about what guidance will be provided by district leadership on the status of focus option and immersion schools and the philosophy around co-located programs. Flow Analytics is being asked to present program analysis, but evaluating educational options is the job of district leaders. These decisions require analysis of the Educational Options Review Committee's work, addressing the questions raised by Sackett's recommendations and determining locations and structures of programs that align with the district's educational priorities and serve students equitably. This is not a simple task, but it needs to be completed in a transparent manner with input from impacted communities before Flow Analytics GIS specialists can begin their work. We continue to see the inequities that are exacerbated in co-located programs that result in single-strand neighborhood schools, meaning there is only a single class at one or more grade levels. In Resolution 5534 from November of 2017, this Board asked current district leadership to come up with proposals by December of 2018 that would increase enrollment at Martin Luther King Junior School to two robust neighborhood strands. Dr. Curtis had suggested that this issue will be resolved with the upcoming boundary review process. The MLK Junior School community, along with others such as Scott and Beach that were not named in the resolution, need and deserve support now to solve the single strand issue. They cannot wait until 2020. Single neighborhood strands in PPS primarily serve high percentages of our historically underserved students and those in poverty. My printed testimony includes a list of challenges caused by single strands that I don't have time to share now, but this issue, along with the lack of boundary change in neighborhood schools whose enrollment has suffered due to a history of redlining, gentrification, and school closures, creates a severe equity issue that the district has a responsibility to address now, not two years from now. Please be proactive in supporting these schools with single strands. Do not repeat the disruptive and chaotic staffing schedule of last year where some FTE were allocated late in the hiring process or after the school year had started, resulting in teachers being unassigned, finding positions in other schools only to have their previous position reopen later. These students deserve consistency and support, not more disruption. I ask the Board to commit to funding two neighborhood strands at all schools serving high percentages of currently and historically underserved students when space is available. Modify the staffing ratio so that these strands are guaranteed at the outset of the staffing cycle to allow administrators equal opportunity in hiring high-quality teachers. This is about equity and leadership now. Students at these schools cannot wait two more years for equitable educational opportunities. I'll close with a request for a follow-up from you to be informed when the Board will have a work session focused on the issue of single strands and when the work session determining guidance for Flow Analytics will occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nate Query. I'm a parent at Beach Elementary and also a member of the Racial Common Unity District-wide Parent Group. I'm here to also ask that you keep your promise to Dr. King's School to provide the resources and immediate enrollment changes necessary to empower them to survive and also in general to adhere to your equity policy and fix some of the unintended impacts of co-locating programs. I'd like to speak to racial inequities I see at Beach that overlap with issues at Martin Luther King Junior Elementary. We're having an immersion program in the same building in the neighborhood, creates a single classroom per grade. The impacts of the single strand are well documented. I'm including a letter a parent wrote to you about Scott in 2016. It's as if she were writing about Beach today. Students and teachers in the single strand have limited options to deal with challenges. It's a very inefficient allocation of resources. One marker of the difference between the two programs is the free and reduced lunch percentage. Beach's immersion program is 28.5%, but the neighborhood side is 54. At Dr. King's School, the numbers are 28 in immersion and 63 on the neighborhood side. Another big difference at Beach is that 90% of our black students are in one neighborhood strand. This glaring segregation is symbolic of so much of Portland and PPS's history of underserving the black community. The immersion program benefits some students at the expense of others. Overall, I want to say that it's infuriating that these inequities are allowed to linger year after year. At Beach, these issues are at least a decade old. A little FTE here and there is just a Band-Aid. Adding a kindergarten teacher was welcome help at Beach this year, but it didn't happen until January. The third-grade neighborhood classroom at Beach currently has 29 kids. The two third-grade immersion classrooms have a total of 43. Some of these single cohorts have had years with cycles of substitutes and ill-equipped teachers, which can contribute to a counterproductive classroom culture that's hard to shake with a single strand. The complicated situation at Beach has also contributed to a high turnover administrators, staff, and teachers. We need leadership that has experience with a diverse community, experience working with the black community, who is not new to PPS and who is willing to dig into a complicated situation. I love the community at Beach and I do not feel our teachers or kids are getting the support they need from the administration or the district. We need to be set up for success. I realize there are plans for a new racial equity and social justice plan and there's a plan for a boundary review, but that doesn't excuse you all from intervening now or last year or three years ago to keep the promises that PPS has made, both specifically to Martin Luther King Elementary or generally as you are not adhering to your own equity policy. North and northeast Portland have been gentrifying at an alarming rate. I ask you to approach these issues with intention and urgency. I feel the urgency and parents all over the city will be watching and raising our voices until we see changes made. Waiting for years to fix these inequities means that our kids will be halfway to high school and unprepared. It's your responsibility and duty to find proactive and systemic solutions. As it says in the halls of Beach Elementary, "It's never too late to do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Mark Jackson and Kaylee Self.
I am the fundraising and program innovation manager at REAP and this is my third year serving in an amazing organization that works to ignite, elevate, and engage the next wave of leaders. Thank you for allowing me this space to speak before the Board and share my experience in working to maintain our vital community partnerships with our Portland Public Schools. I am aware that an updated contract negotiation system for community partners in the PPS District is in the works and that will, it will be unveiled soon and I am hopeful that can remedy some of the issues we've experienced in our recent partnership efforts with the district. Since summer of 2018, REAP has been discouraged by a recent evaluation process under PPS District Leadership that seems unique to our partnership, where program success was regularly diminished and undervalued. Our journey starts at Boise Elliott, where we are excited to build on our increased success working with elementary-level students in our restorative justice program, Reflections. The district intended, instead, recommended we discontinue our services despite increased enrollment in the area and greater demand for services expressed by school leadership in order to focus our efforts on the other partnerships in the district. That made it all the more surprising when we experienced increased barriers to delivering services in the district at Madison, at Madison High School. REAP's visibility and engagement with students over the 17th and 18th school year was greatly increased, but discounted by school staff and then cosigned by PPS community partner staff without a full account of the demonstrated success at that site. We provided reports and testimonials from students and parents that confirmed these efforts, but we were unable to find a collaborator who was willing to see and value that work. REAP's ever-increasing success at Harrison Park, a feeder school of Madison, as you may know, was halted as a result of the scrutiny at the high school level and we also received unfair characterizations after our efforts to reestablish important connections with existing REAP students that were seen as undermining the community partner process and PPS's collaborative process. We are very fortunate to have remedied certain aspects of this situation with the collaborative help of the special advisor and superintendent on equity and at PPS get back on track with serving the REAP students of the PPS District. Going forward, REAP can be successful with the following help from PPS District Leaders. First, a system where community partners are recognized and regarded for the history of work that they have demonstrated of clear and measurable success. This has not been acknowledged in the current PPS system and is very important in determining who comes to the table to participate in future contract vetting processes. I would hate to see a system that encourages successful culturally-specific community partners to compete to serve the most marginalized students in the district. We need a contract negotiation process that does not delay programming opportunities for our most, for our students who are most in need. Opportunities for community partners to reestablish roots where they have demonstrated measurable success in the past. A clear and transparent process that not only when it comes to community partner allocation, budget, and placement, but also in creating structures to evaluate the school, with the school administration and community partner leaders. In order for the community partners to be successful in the long term, these vital steps will create the lasting collaborative process that we've needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Jackson, the Executive Director of REAP. I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to share a public comment this evening. As I approach this moment, I'm reminded of my freshman English teacher at a Madison High School in this district who addressed the entire class and expressed her frustration with black students and how we are not successful students because of our behavior. I was 14 years old at that time and had to resolve in my growing mind if I would in fact believe this teacher's assessment of black students. Well, I'm now 48. By God's grace, I've grown from being a PPS student to a graduate of PSU with credentials in sociology, English, communication, and also black studies. I've been blessed to work for elected officials, business leaders, community advocates, and also educators. I've served as a co-founder of REAP and our organization has program history of serving our most vulnerable marginalized students for over 14 years in this district. Over the years, REAP has done programming at Grant, Lincoln, Jefferson, Franklin, Madison, Harrison Park. I've learned how to navigate the waters of changing leadership at the school level, the district level, and yes, even the Board level. Despite these leadership transitions, REAP leadership has never changed, nor our mission and our commitment to serve students. Despite all my academic achievement and my established personal integrity among this district and this community at large, several months ago, district leaders characterized me as a hostile, intimidating, and misleading professional, totally contrary of my tenure of service in this community and this district. Consequently, REAP's contract was not renewed, in fact canceled, and students, students, lost services. Our contract was not canceled not because of poor program outcomes, not because of schools and students who were dissatisfied with our services. Our contract was canceled because someone who had power to make a decision based on the premise of how they perceived myself. For the first part of this school year, countless students have gone without services and have that have been provided uniquely by this REAP organization. Had it not been for Board involvement and the stellar work of Danny, Edisma, and the support of the Superintendent up to this point, I wouldn't have the optimism that I have today about the potential of continued services with this district. As my staff and I continue to engage with district staff and meet with Chair Moore, it is my hope that the district intentionally recognizes the foundational commitment of community partners like REAP that have contributed to the recent spike in graduation rates. Furthermore, it is my hope that you as a Board will reflect on my personal story, both as a former PPS student and now a 14-year PPS community partner, asking yourselves a question, is this the new district you all envisioned? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next?
That's it? That's it? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Please feel free again to contact the Board Manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you want to follow up with the Board or Board Office. Okay. Well, next, on a good note, this proclamation, it is African-American History Month. So February is National African-American Black History Month, which celebrates the contributions and achievement of African-American students and individuals. This month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories and to acknowledge the important contributes, contributions of black people. This is also an opportune time to educate the general public about the unique challenges that our students have faced, both historically and in the present. So, the Board, to read our resolution on Resolution 5806, I ask, I'd like to ask Director Bailey to share the resolution with us, please.
Thank you. And reiterating, past and current. So here's the, our resolution. Whereas the origin of Black History Month began in 1915, it's over 100 years ago, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States, it was the creation of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. And whereas, with the Civil Rights Movement and a growing awareness of black identity, Black History Month is now an annual celebration of achievements by black Americans, a time for recognizing the central, a central role of members of the African diaspora in US history. And whereas, the contributions of members of the African diaspora and their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks in our nation as artists, scientists, educators, business people, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, and political and governmental leaders reflects the greatness of the United States. And whereas, black history reflects a determined spirit of perseverance and cultural pride in its struggle to equitably share in the opportunities of a nation founded upon the principles of freedom and liberty for all people. And whereas, members of the African diaspora have participated in every American effort to secure, protect, and advance the cause of freedom and civil rights and continue to resist white supremacy. And whereas, the local community has enriched the diversity of perspective and experience in our district and the Board of Education desires to recognize and honor the achievements and contributions of members of the African diaspora. And whereas, our history curriculum of community, state, region, national, and the world must reflect the lived experiences of people of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups. And whereas, last one, all students need an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Portland Public Schools hereby recognizes the month of February 2019 as Black History Month and encourages all educators to commemorate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, instructional activities, and programs.
Thank you. Additionally, we want to recognize that Black Lives Matter Week of Action is February 4th through 8th and we encourage our students and staff to participate in the achievement activities of this as well. The Portland Association of Teachers is leading these activities and we thank them for their work on this and their leadership. So, do I have a motion and a second on Resolution 5806? Great, Director Brim Edwards moves and Director Rosen second to the adoption of Resolution 5806. Is there any Board discussion? Okay, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5806. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Paul?
That was a yes from Paul.
Yes from Paul?
Yes.
Okay, great. All opposed, please indicate, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5806 is approved by a vote of... Resolution 5806 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. With student Representative Paisler voting?
Yes.
Thank you. Great.
You were so quick, I didn't have a chance on the discussion. It's not really a discussion point, but I just wanted to recommend that later in the month that we have an opportunity maybe to hear from students or our staff during Black History Month.
That would be great. Thank you. So we'll be hoping to have some activities or share some activities here what's happening in our schools. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Guerrero?
Would you like to provide your report? Give us an update.
Good evening, directors, students, members of the public, our viewing and our present audience. I'm going to try something a little different here today. I thought we would put some visuals. As often as we meet up here, it doesn't seem like there's ever enough time to really sort of share all the interesting things that are happening across the district, and so hopefully the pictures will help to substitute for a thousand words apiece. So, starting with this past week, there were some big announcements and news across the state of Oregon, including for here in Portland Public Schools related to just posted graduation rates for 1718. You're going to hear a presentation in just a bit on that. You will hear about some of the impact, we believe, that Measure 98 and our career tech education programming, we believe, is having on students' persistence through high school and beyond, as well as engagement in school. I think you see one of our outstanding students there. So we're going to step back a little bit and take a slightly deeper dive into some of these victories. So a little bit of a commercial on Measure 98, some of our early evidence here. I don't know that I could do that there, but for those that don't have the visual, we have two students signing a log together. Many students take classes in which they have an opportunity to design things, build things, get their hands dirty, and we hear from them, both anecdotally and in some evidence, that they're staying engaged and that they're graduating in greater numbers. And those are some of the best practices, we believe, that will help to keep our students on track towards walking across that graduation stage. To give you some specifics around what Measure 98 funding has allowed us to do here in PPS in the way of investment, it includes 13 instructional coaches who lead our freshman success teams. Our freshman success teams play a vital role in connecting with our ninth graders to make sure that they have a strong foundation as they start off their high school careers. Measure 98 funding also permits us to invest in 13 school-based student engagement coaches, another important way that an adult can serve to bridge that relationship and relational trust with our high school students. Combining these teams and coaches, they help to provide an array of interventions to over 500 students on matters of attendance, behavior, getting through their coursework, and making sure they're passing with the high expectations that we have for them. This is the kind of student-by-student support that we believe is planting seeds for even bigger gains in graduation rates in the future. Measure 98 also allowed us to add some extensive professional development activities for our staff. We have been able to add new CTE program strands at many of our smaller high schools and even some material investments, like over 700 Chromebooks or laptops for use by our students across the district. Another important activity that's really ramped up lately, over the past few weeks, we've been engaging hundreds and hundreds, literally, of students, family members, staff, and other stakeholders in conversations around the aspiration that we hold in common for Portland Public Schools and for our students' experience pre-K-12. That's been one aspect of it, our visioning initiative, and the other is on the future of the Benson campus and all the stakeholders currently under the roof at the Benson campus and how we understand the important role that these programs play, as well as some of the amenities and physical supports that will help continue to not just value those programs, but support our students who rely on that programming. So at Benson, we've continued to have engagement sessions with nearly every program of our historic comprehensive CTE school. I've had the opportunity to personally attend with many of our board directors, thank you for being there, and other senior staff, engagement meetings with students, staff, and parents at the Alliance at Benson program, as well as the Alliance at MEAC campus. We've also had an opportunity to meet with the DART and Clinton School professionals. We met recently with the Teen Parents Program, Reconnection Services. We also had a chance to meet with some of our evening scholars. These are students who participate in night school, as well as some summer scholars. I just want to appreciate the really robust turnout by our students and stakeholders in those programs and our board of directors for getting personally involved in hearing their stories and their hopes for their future. On Wednesday, we're going to hold another session with PISA, which means we will have at that point heard from each of the multiple pathway to graduation programs that are currently housed at Benson. So thank you, everyone, for your participation and for sharing your very candid thoughts, and in particular, for sharing many of your personal journeys and what these alternatives have meant to you and your success. So in addition to some active listening, we're also spending time visiting the programs and getting to know the students in action, including the educators and the unique history of the school and its programs. I think you have an example there of some of the spaces at Benson. The other big effort has been our visioning process. It's been an incredible past two weeks. There have been more than 25 sessions held where families of special education students, migrant education families, families of students with dyslexia, central office staff, classified staff, educators, and more. I want to thank many central office staff, but again, also our board of directors. They've been very busy. They've been participating in many of our visioning sessions, including this past Saturday, and we're looking forward to another guiding coalition meeting this Friday night and all day Saturday again. When I say folks have been showing up, this past Saturday had over 200 members of the public, folks interested in helping to co-construct a vision for the future of PPS. So my hat's off to everybody for continuing to be engaged in meaningful ways. Just to give a little bit of a sense of sort of the variety and the cross-section of folks, we've had sessions with other numerous community and PPS organizations. That includes friends of music. We know that arts education will play an important role in a holistic education of the future. We've also met with some culturally specific student affinity groups, including black student unions, Gay Straight Alliance, Vos Latina, Partners in Diversity, and Unite Oregon, among many others. So thank you to those organizations for lending their voice as well. And I mentioned this past Saturday, we've had our biggest community meeting to date, 200 people coming to Madison High School to give their thoughts and help as we dream together. That's our, sort of our motto for these sessions about our city and our school. It has been a massive undertaking. I want to make sure and recognize the many people who have helped to make this possible. That includes staff on our strategic partnerships team, special shout out to Jonathan Garcia, communications and public engagements team, our board and board support staff, and our visioning core team, and many others who've put in the time, sweat, and heart into this effort. Thank you. This past week, we also held our annual Classified Connections Gathering. Every educator knows that our classified employees are the backbone of our schools and our school system. Without their support, we couldn't teach in an ideal and optimal teaching and learning environment. We couldn't function as a school district, and our students just would not be able to be as successful as they are were it not for their day-to-day support and role in our school communities. To give you a sense of what the Classified Connection Gathering included, this is an event that focused on a dozen or so core themes, including some professional development and training for staff that included some de-escalation training that is helping to support our students who might be experiencing a behavior challenge. We talked about mindfulness for school transformation. We talked about our efforts to make sure that our students were maximizing their time in school and our efforts at increasing attendance rates. And one of the workshops titled Be the Adult the Kids Need, empower school staff to respond to discrimination and embrace families of color. These are the kinds of sort of topical themes that our classified staff engage in, some really important conversation. These are the kinds of critical professional development opportunities we want to continue to make available. I wanted to share that this week marks an initial push for us to launch a successful school survey. It's not uncommon that school districts and PPS in the past have queried the broader community about how are we doing, in particular on issues of school culture and climate. This is our effort this year to get a baseline read on the views from students, families, and staff throughout the school system. Every student, to get sort of a representative sense in grades five, seven, and 10, will be given an opportunity to take the survey. Every family in the district will be invited to take the survey for each of the schools that their students attend, and all school-based staff will get a chance to take the survey as well. So notifications have begun to go out to families and staff, and I want to encourage everybody to lend their input and their voice. A little bit about the actual survey itself, it's a nationally designed by a nationally recognized group that uses research-based questions to give districts a way to compare among schools and among other districts. We have some key dates I want us to keep in mind. The survey for students starts on February 4 and will run through the 22nd of the month. For families, they will begin to receive the link for taking the survey, starting on February 4 through the month through March 1st. We hope to gather input. And then staff, staff will be invited to take the survey, starting February 19th, and will run through the middle of March. So this is part of our effort to become data-informed as a school system, and certainly how our students, families, and staff are feeling about their schools and our work overall is going to be very important information. So don't hesitate to remind your colleagues and families, hashtag take the survey. And appropriate for this evening's resolution by our board, PPS was well-represented at the annual Keep Alive the Dream event that honors the legacy of the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. You see an example here of students onstage, but the event, the all-day event featured performances by the Bravo Music Program from Sosa Chavez Schools, the American Music Program from Vernon, and the Jefferson High School dancers, just to name a few folks who were there in that program. And I see our principal from Benson back there. If I could ask him to approach the bench, please. There was also a big moment during that program agenda where our very own Curtis Wilson, the great Tech Man, received a lifetime achievement award for his years of service to students, especially for his dedication to making sure our students of color in particular get the opportunities that they need to succeed. Curtis is a native of North Portland and witnessed firsthand how students of color had to and still have to push through barriers to achieve the things so many of us take for granted. Normally, at this point, I would show a little video, but we have Principal Wilson here, live and in person. I would love to invite him up, if you would please do us the honor. And just share a few words with us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and basically just, for me, it's been a lifelong achievement as far as supporting and working in PPS. I've been a part of PPS my entire life, a product of Porch Mount Middle School, Roosevelt High School, and I even came back through my four years of college and worked in PPS as a painter and a custodian, right? And then when I had the opportunity to come back as a teacher and put in the first half of my career working at Harriet Tubman in Roosevelt, and then deciding to make the move to administration, I knew that my journey is almost complete because it's just been a lifelong passion of mine to just work with kids. That's, I've known that since I was about 12 years old, that I was going to work with kids, as a kid. And so I've been following that path. I feel great about what I'm doing over at Benson. I have a great staff, great kids, a great admin team, and I'm just blessed right now. It is a lot of work, a lot of long days, long hours, but the administrators in this city, I feel like we're doing our calling, which is to support our staff and students. And so, you know, yes, it's an individual award, but I have eight other, nine other, 10 other high school principals that are busting their buns, just like I am, and then all the other administrators throughout the other elementary, middle schools as well, and alternative programs that are doing what's important to support our students. So on behalf of all of the administrators in the city, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Principal Wilson, well deserved. Thank you for your continued dedication and leadership. If he looks familiar, for those of you in the viewing audience, you'll remember Principal Wilson was just recognized this past school year as High School Principal of the Year in the state of Oregon. So thank you for your continued work and accolades, well deserved. As I shared to our leadership gathering last week, thank you Vice Chair Asparza Brown for being present as well. We had a chance to share with our principals and recognize, especially at mid-year here, that it is a lot of hard work, but you are making a difference. So thank you for your leadership. That concludes my report.
Thank you. You and every other administrator realize that. So thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
It's been a bit of a busy time, and I would like to take this opportunity to also acknowledge the diligence, the work of our staff in the visioning process. It has been, we're really gathering wonderful information and feedback from the community that will be so important in leading us into our future. Okay, next, we have a presentation from students tonight, and I'd like to ask Director Bailey to introduce the topic.
So I'd like to invite up Aaron Pressburg, who's our Senior Manager of Energy Efficiency and Sustainability.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, board, for having us. So as Scott said, my name is Aaron Pressburg. I am the Senior Program Manager of Energy and Sustainability for the district. I work in the Facilities Department. I'm excited to be here this evening with students from Wilson High School, who worked very hard producing a video that highlights some of the improvements we've made in our schools around water conservation and energy efficiency. AMRESCO, our partner for energy efficiency projects, hired a professional videographer to work with these students, and it was exciting to see the students engage about what career fields they might pursue, while they also learned about video production, as well as the great energy efficiency work that PPS is doing in our facilities with AMRESCO. So AMRESCO made this commitment above and beyond their contract requirement because they wanted to help provide hands-on learning opportunities for our students that would help leave a lasting impact across the district. We are now in our ninth phase of work with AMRESCO, and through energy savings performance contracting, we've been able to make the following improvements to our schools. Water conservation projects at 81 schools, energy efficiency projects at 16 schools. We've been able to save over $900,000 annually from our utility budget. We are able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 2,600 metric tons of carbon dioxide, which is a 6.5% reduction of our annual emissions, and that is also equivalent of 2.8 million pounds of coal burned, so we're making quite an impact there. So we have four of the five students here that worked on this video project. Congrats to Julian Trumbo, who graduated Wilson High School last year, so he's off to college. Gives me great pleasure to introduce to you these students from Wilson High School that worked with Zach Putnam, who is our videographer. So we have Reed Killi, Rachel Rodriguez, Jacob Bell, and Chloe Shimenovich here to introduce the video, and we're going to, we're going to play it back for you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. Come on out. Do we need another chair?
Yeah. Good evening.
Welcome.
The goal of the video you're about to watch was to introduce students to the job offerings in the energy industry through the lens of the work that AMRESCO, a leading renewable energy company and energy efficiency company, has done for and with Portland Public Schools. The project was produced over three months by a crew of Wilson students, including myself, Jacob, Jacob, Chloe, and Rachel Rodriguez, and Julian Trumbo. However, none of it would have been possible without the valuable input, organization, and advocacy that Zach Putnam, who managed the whole project, provided. Personally, I found the contextualization of how this part of Portland Public Schools and the renewable energy business at large operates really interesting, and it was amazing to be able to meet some of the people that work in that industry. Additionally, this project helped me solidify my goals in a career in visual media by providing real-world, client-based experience. I hope that PPS continues to engage its students in similar ways. Thank you again to the entire crew, as well as everyone from AMRESCO and PPS who helped make this project happen.
for energy, and it is a finite resource. AMRESCO is focused on delivering energy efficiency and renewable energy solutions in the existing building market.
PPS cares about energy efficiency for multiple reasons. We want to be good stewards of the environment, you know, we want to reduce the resources that we consume as a district.
The overall vision and goal for our work with Portland Public Schools is to improve their facilities and save energy at the same time.
Bottom line is energy. So we want to save as much energy as we can, and that's why we're doing these upgrades.
So we start by looking at the utility bills and by interviewing facilities and maintenance staff to identify schools that have a lot of problems. Portland Public Schools is faced with a lot of aging infrastructure. I think the average school is about 75 years old. And then what we'll do is walk through the schools to visually confirm that there are energy efficiency opportunities there. We deploy data loggers on all the main equipment. We take power measurements, airflow measurements, and spend a lot of time learning the buildings themselves. Through the information we gather in the energy audit, we're able to calculate savings. After the audit is completed, we move into contracting for the actual construction work. AMRESCO has guaranteed the savings for the project, and so at the end of the project, we come back and check all the equipment we installed to make sure it is performing well.
I recommend anybody that is into science, you have to know science, into electrical, to get in this field. It'd be great for men and women. It's open to everybody.
The energy efficiency sector is definitely growing.
There are administrators, account executives, and project managers, facilities directors, financial officers, marketers, construction managers, electricians, plumbers, steam fitters, sheet metal workers, HVAC controls workers, insulation workers, and resource conservation managers. If you want to be part of the solution to the problems we face related to energy, the energy efficiency field would be a great career path for you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Another hand? Thank you for your time. I'd like to invite Jerry Glenn with AMRESCO, just for some closing statements on his experience with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you Superintendent Guerrero, as well as the school board for having us. Very excited that over the last decade that we've been working with you to save close to $900,000 a year. Today, we just got another contract for our ninth project, so we're shooting to go over a million dollars a year in savings with the district, and wanted to just thank you for the opportunity. I've got four children here in the PPS district right now, and so it's personally gratifying to know that, you know, additional million dollars is going back into the budget every year from here on forward. So we are looking forward to working with you in the future, as well as the students. We really are enjoying the CTE work and work with Jay and Gina Yurkovich there, and see a really great opportunity to not only make it kind of project-based, but also interacting with the kids. And one additional comment, not only is it, as you saw with the kids that worked on the project today, is it's not just the science and the math and the engineering kids that need to get excited about clean energy. There's tons of jobs from a liberal arts perspective, and so we'd like to reach out to those students as well and just let them know there's great opportunity kind of in the new economy. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for the upgrades. Thanks for the upgrades at Cleveland. It's my home, so.
Okay, nice work.
Yeah, so just kind of closing off, this is, you know, our bond work for rebuilding our schools. Those contracts all include provisions for student engagement. I think we've made progress there. I think there's a lot we can do, even more going forward, particularly around our career and technical education programs. You know, we're going to have a big project coming up, and when as we deal with boundaries, I believe there are some opportunities there for student engagement in terms of learning facilitation skills, for example, communication skills with the community. So I think there's, this is something we're beginning to tap and something we can build on, is engaging our students in the actual work of the district. Thanks.
Thank you, and wonderful work again. Okay, so on to more celebrations. I'd like to ask Superintendent Gette to introduce the next topic.
Well, I mentioned earlier, and if you didn't catch it on almost every media outlet last week, graduation rates are out. We're very pleased that Portland Public has posted for the third year in a row a graduation rate that exceeds the state average, so we're pleased, but we're obviously still not satisfied. We're especially happy about some accelerated outcomes for particular subgroups of students. But to give the viewing public and our audience and directors more specifics, we have a small team here who's been very involved and beginning to do the analysis, so I'm going to invite our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Curtis, to lead the way on this presentation.
So before the team shares the presentation, I would just like to say, this is a moment of celebration to have our three folks up here. One of the things I want the community and our Board to know is that as we continue to transform and put together the work that we're doing in the district, it's very important that the Office of Teaching and Learning, Office of Schools, Office of our System Performance are working really closely together, working hand in hand. And so the presentation we have tonight is intentionally being delivered by one person from each of the department. They all play different roles, but we really want you to know after this presentation, not just the great celebration, but the great work that's going on, as well as our intention and why we know that our graduation rates and our readiness of our students for college and careers will continue to improve. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Curtis. Good evening. We are excited to share with you some information regarding our high school graduation rates, and I'd just like to reiterate her comment about the way our three primary departments under Dr. Curtis's guidance have come together to really coalesce in some common vision to move this work forward. I would begin by saying when we begin to examine graduation rates, it's not an event in which that occurs, because it is really several factors over the course of several years that bring successful graduation for our students. And to that end, I just wanted to say that there's a lot of work that we're now doing as a group to do that work together. Part of that comes in the form of our four-year plan that the high school has, but also so much of the work that we do with the Office of School, the Office of Student Services, as well as Office of Teaching and Learning, is actually hand in hand, just like the leadership meetings that we had this last week, where very much a combination of that work coming together. Tonight, we'd just like to share some highlights with you and some data about just where things are at in regards to our performances last year, and also identify some places that we still have work to do, and some of our strategies for moving that work forward. Okay? So this particular slide just shows a couple of highlights, that our graduation rate has now climbed to 79.6%, which is up nine points over the last five years, and it continues to climb. We're very proud of the fact that it's not actually slipped in any of those years. We also saw a large jump in the performance of our Black African-American students, up nearly six points from where it was in 1617. A couple of other highlights here is, we're celebrating what Alliance High School's been able to do for our graduation rates here. They increased their rates 5%. Alliance High School is an alternative education setting in which we're able to reconnect with some of our students and help them find a climate in which they can be successful. And this is just more data to indicate that they are actually helping reconnect with students who may not find our traditional high school settings a good place for them. Also, for the fourth year in a row, Jefferson High School has had their rate over 80%, and we think that's also a great point of celebration. A couple of key strategies for our success is, there's a correlation between the fact that we went to double blocking in our master schedule a few years ago, just about the same time as we started to see this trend in graduation rates increase. And double blocking does permit us an opportunity to use more time to go deeper with students, as well as provide individual instruction, and it also provides us an extra period in which we can also do some deeper work with students who need some scaffolding supports. And so that's one of the strategies that we feel is a key success factor for us. This year and last year, we implemented the freshman success teams out of the Measure 98 money, and those have been very successful. You can see in 1617 that our ninth grade on-track rate was 85%, and we've increased it 7% this year. That freshman on-track rate is one of the major indicators of student success in high school, and so we're very pleased to see that that's moved so much just in one year. Additionally, we've hired student engagement coaches in all of the high schools, and they work directly with high school teams of counselors, on SART teams, they're called, to monitor student attendance, and the result of that has also been increased attendance rates. A few other strategies for success are our advanced coursework, and we spoke to this a little while ago with this group, with you. Our advanced coursework, we've seen an increase in the number of students who are taking advanced placement. 450 more students, almost 10% higher than last year. The number of students recovered by Reconnection Center is dramatic. We had over 1,200 contacts made this year. A third of those students actually made it successfully through the program in their reconnection and stayed on through the entire school year. The work down there in Reconnection Services and our alternative programs is really a significant impact in these graduation rates. Additionally, career and technical education programs, our CTE programs, we've seen over 1,000 more students enter those programs this year, and there's dramatic evidence to show what the impact of students taking CTE programming is in high school success. We do have areas of focus. I've mentioned earlier that there's room for growth. The two main that really surface in this data is in regards to special education. 59.3% of our students graduated this last year. That's a decline of 4.7. And it's, that's still 2% above where it was a couple of years ago, but it's still not satisfactory. We're not settling for that, and so I'll share with you some of our thinking as here in just a moment. Additionally, our English language learners went from 57, dropped to 57.5%, which is a decline of six percentage points from the previous year. Still 6% above two years ago, but again, not satisfactory to our liking. We are looking at some specific strategies to address these two subgroup populations. The four-year cohort graduation rate is what we've been discussing. That's what the 79.6 percentage point was. Thanks, Joe. And what that is basically is, it is a new definition that was shared by the state of Oregon in 2008, 2009, and basically follows a cohort of students through four years of high school and measures the percentage that graduate on time. It's a more rigorous method than we've used in the past. It does measure students earning regular or modified diplomas count as graduates inside that cohort. Students earning GEDs and extended diplomas do not count inside that group. This chart actually displays what our rates have done since 2009 to date, and you can see where the red, PPS is the red bar here, and the light green is the state of Oregon. And you can see that we have had a significant upward trajectory for the last several years, each year making another step in this direction. I can't emphasize enough how this is not the accomplishments of any one school. This is the accomplishments of a team of people coming together with a common focus. And Curtis's statements earlier about the power of the leadership that he works with, I think is indicative in these results as well. If you don't mind going back for just one moment, you can see also that our trajectory about four years ago, we actually caught the state of Oregon and surpassed it, though starting in 2009, we were 13%, 12-plus percent below their average. We've now caught them, and we are still operating above them. 79.6% is a wonderful number in regards to where we were last year, but in no way satisfies us, okay? We know that that means there's 21% of the students we still have got to reach, and so that is at the core of our work. This particular chart helps break down how we compare to some of the other urban centers. And what I think is most pronounced on this particular chart is, as you examine it, is when you look at Portland, which is the second set of bars, you can see that, you know, you've got that consecutive years of growth, and as you look across some of the other urban centers that we're comparing ourselves to, there's certainly some that are outperforming us, but very few have the growth that we have and have that same common trajectory of consistent growth. And I think that's just important for us to recognize that we have a pattern of performance here that is, that's very positive. This particular chart breaks down some race and ethnicity gaps that we have in our graduation rates. I shared some of those earlier by subgroup populations of special education and ESL, but this actually breaks it down by race and ethnicity, and you can see from this chart that there's some really significant gaps in regards to what we're doing to serve all students. I want to call out the American Indian and Native American group at 40.6%. That's a horrible number and totally unsatisfactory, but I also want to call out that the number of students we're counting is a very small number, and that small number jumps radically when you have a few more students. It's not an excuse. I just want you to know that when we examine that number, that's one that can fluctuate radically from one year to the next. I want to go back just a moment, if I may. You can see the white percentage at 83.4% is the indication that the gap still exists. You can see most of our subgroup populations are still not performing at that 83.4%, and those are the gaps that we want to continue to close. The percentages that we had with our Black population growing 6% this year was a really good example of how we've closed some of that gap, but again, we're not settling on that. It's just what we were able to accomplish so far this year. I'm going to probably defer to Joe on some of this chart, but basically, this again shows subgroup populations, and it shows five years continual, but the little dash that you see, that little red dash, shows state-level rates in those subgroup populations for this year's data. So like in the very first one, where you see all students, and the purple bar, you see 2017, 18, and at the very top, you see a dash, and just a little bit of purple above that bar, that indicates that we're outperforming there by the slightest of margins. But in the next category, when you get to American Indian and Alaska Native, you can see that there's a significant gap between our performance versus what the state's average is. That's the way you read that particular chart. So when you start going down the line, you can see that we're still not quite meeting the gap that we have in state performance versus our performance with our Hispanic and Latino populations as well. Joe, can you speak for a moment to the dot that's for multiracial, please?
Yeah, sorry about that. The state, is that on? The state does not disaggregate multiracial. The state does not disaggregate multiracial students any further than just how they identify as more than one race. Within PPS, we have been trying to break those students further down by those who identify as white and Asian only versus those who do not identify white or Asian. And you can see that there's a big difference between those groups. We just want to be able to individualize that a little bit more to those students.
Thank you. Thank you for that. This, this chart here again is focusing on five, on the five years of graduation rates, but it breaks down into some different subgroup populations that are racially bound. These are the economically disadvantaged rates, as well as special education and ELL. And you can see, I'm going to start on the far right. You can see how we are slightly above the state average in ELL performance, but again, I want to reiterate that we've dropped our performance there, and that's not okay. We know we can do better, and we'll continue to raise that bar or that number. You can see also, we're not meeting even the state's average in regards to the special education population. Again, that's just not satisfactory, and that's why we'll be focusing on that in some of our work as we go forward. This particular slide, I think, is really very profound. It really helps understand, the blue bar is the four-year cohort, and the, and the red bar is the five-year cohort completers. Much of the success that we have with our five-year cohort completers are coming from our alternative ed programming. Reconnection Center, Alliance, MLC, Trillium, many of our schools, our CBOs. And this, this chart really helps show just how high of numbers we get in five-year completers across the district with the alternative ed program that we have. It really is a robust program and serves us well. Joe?
And just to clarify, the five-year completer rate also includes GEDs and extended diplomas in the, in the success rate.
And this is the three-year trend by schools. We, I, this just kind of highlights what the schools are doing in some regards. I will say, when you look at this chart, you see some that have consistent upward trajectories going on that are mirroring our data, some others that, you know, struggle a little bit. When, when you examine MLC, I just want to call out the fact that, again, they have very small numbers, so it just takes a few of those kids to set their data back a step. But for the most part, you can see that the schools all the way across the board are supporting this work as it's going forward, and, and it's not, it's not really on the back of any one school or any one community that we, as a district and as a high school system, as a K-12 system, are responsible for delivering the results that we're sharing with you tonight. And with that, I just wanted to touch on the fact that we have some very specific next steps in mind for how we want to actually work on some of those subgroup populations that I mentioned to you earlier, and we're focusing on implementing some culturally relevant curriculum that we hope will get more specifically to the needs of the students who are struggling with some of our requirements. We're also looking at our school climate and chronic absenteeism processes to make sure that we're doing something that's keeping the kids in school and keeping, keeping kids comfortable in their schools, which is really important. I mean, if, if the student is uncomfortable in school, they're not hearing a thing that's happening in class, and so it's really critical that the climate of the school is conducive to the students. We're also trying to prepare all students for post-secondary success, and that really does mean a marriage between the college readiness work, as well as the career technical work, and not thinking of them as two separate things, but as actually a robust program that can help ready students for either of those vocations. We're also going to continue to implement grade-level collaborative instructional teams. This is a huge undertaking we've done this year, and we've actually begun to embed this practice in schedules in a way so that we can protect the instructional time and make sure that these conversations that are so critical are taking place. We can, we're looking for ways to actually expand that work this next year. And then, and it's actually in that work that we can really drill down into the data of those students that need the additional support and make sure that we're serving them. And then lastly, we're going to enhance CTE quality partnerships and sustain the successful programs we have. That's not just a talking point, that's a reality. We are currently out visiting successful programs, examining them, trying to refine the work that we're going to continue to do in our district to make our CTE program that's already very strong even stronger. We know that when students are able to engage in that work, they're more engaged in their high school. With that, I'll open it to questions.
Thank you very much. A lot to celebrate, and of course, as you indicated, there's room for growth.
Yes, absolutely.
Board members, questions, comments?
So I have a question specifically about our strategies with English language learners because, you know, in some of these areas, we want to double down on what we're doing, and we know that, and that's particularly gratifying when we look at the freshman success strategies and the teams and the time that our teachers have to spend with our ninth graders now with the Measure Ninety-eight money, and so that suggests that we'll only see those graduation and completion rates grow because of those investments we're making now. But specifically with our English language learners and special education, what are we doing to reexamine our fundamental strategies?
You bet. So one of the things that we're doing today, okay, I can tell you that I had, I was in four high schools today and held this conversation with four different principals, was around their actual ELL student population performance in ELS and their ELA class. What kind of support they're getting in that class? Because the Office of Teaching and Learning informed us that we have about twenty-seven percent of our ELA student, or I'm sorry, our EL, our English language learners are at, twenty-seven percent of them are getting a D or an F in their, in their ELA class. So, so that doesn't make any sense. That's where they should have the most support, and they should have success. So in those visits with schools, we're unwrapping right now what that percentage is at the school, who those students are. We're examining why that's happening in those schools so that we can better strategize about what's happening so we can be better, in, in better support. In one of those schools today, I can tell you, I know for a fact that, that one of those classes had a long-term sub, and so we're just concerned about what that impact was on that little group of students, but that's the type of stuff that we're starting to uncover as we go deeper into who those four hundred students are in the high schools.
This is something Superintendent Guerrero that I would like to see specifically called out in the budget process. What additional resources are we looking at targeting for our English language learners? And just so that it's easy for us to parse out in the whole budget where we're making investments, because frankly, we've been stymied with these students for a long time.
It's good to point out that some of, some, what's important is resources, yes, of course, but even more importantly, having a coherent set of strategies around how we're going to tackle this gap that isn't acceptable. Some of it is curricular material, some of it is research-based English language development material, some of it is making sure that all of our educators have the opportunity to learn, you know, a little deeper knowledge-based and language acquisition theory, as well as strategies that will work more effectively for our English language learners. Some of it is work even that we need to continue in conversation with other partners like higher education institutions and making sure that our entry-level teachers also have some understandings and abilities to also work with English language learners. Oregon, unlike other states, has a little thinner requirement on some of that being part of the syllabus or no requirement in many cases. So we have the challenge of also making sure that we continue to provide that kind of professional learning as well. And as far as what, what the school experience might look like for some of our ELLs, you know, what are those, some of those practical supports need to include as well so that they're able to not just access content and demonstrate mastery of those learnings, but of course, reading, writing, listening, speaking, all those sort of second language skill sets that we want them to have. So we're just getting started in this work. We know what some important ingredients are going to be. Some of the strategies apply to all, but we know that we need to get really specific about not just ELLs. I would add to that, we really need to do a deep dive into making sure we collectively understand what universal design for learning looks like for our students with disabilities, and just because they're good research-based practices for all of our students. And so as we continue doing our multi-tiered work to support, you know, our students, not just behaviorally and in their readiness to learn, but also what is our academic RTI look like? So for that, we've got to have a strong core, and our core itself needs to make new knowledge accessible for ELLs and students with disabilities. So there's, there's an effort, you know, that we'll have to sort of undertake to really take on this topic and discuss sort of what is a, what is a year's worth of, you know, goals look like for this coming year? And there's a lot of knowledge here at the dais, as well as with our educators and leaders to sort of begin to develop a blueprint for, for that work. And there's some promising practices already happening in some of our schools. And so as we continue to disaggregate, where did we see particular traction for our ELLs or any other subgroup that we want to encourage a professional learning community around?
So I have some comments as well. So we've talked about the four years that I've been on this board, the need for a multi-tiered support system, and I know that we have a team, we're finally building that. I, I just want to acknowledge I've seen some issues that I hope that we can resolve, is it still looks to me that it's not as foundational and overarching as it needs to be, and it's really connecting, just like you are all here as a team, it's connecting all of the departments, so we're not just worried about building out the core, but there are systems for who we support, and those kids can't wait. So it's a matter of what are we also doing in curriculum at the same time as we're planning a rollout? So what's the ask for us in the budget in terms of how do we then prepare to have available to teachers the material, materials that they'll need to support students? Because tier two, the supports that we need is not just reteaching core. Right, and we know that, and that's another reason, I think, for the lower rates of graduation that we see with kids with disabilities, that twenty percent that have reading disabilities actually need something quite different. And I, we're not very well, I think, we haven't supported that well enough in this district, and that's another budget ask that I'd like us to consider and really look at deeply this year, is the need to look specifically at that group of students. I also had a question and a comment on the advanced coursework. What I'd like to see, it's great that we've increased the number of students, but I also ask, what color are we increasing those IB courses for? And I know that we all have the same goal of, you know, really changing the color of our IB and advanced placement coursework, but I think getting a report on that is, it would be great so that we can see that traction.
Now, I, I know that, that even though we had a large number join, we did not close the gap between the number of students with different race participation. It was actually very similar. It was like we, the whole thing moved one, one step up in participation, and the gap remained the same. I, I, I know that data because that is actually one of the three primary goals that we have in our four-year plan for high schools. Okay, so after recognizing that data point this, this fall, all the high school teams came back together and said, okay, wait a minute, how did that happen? And why did we not make a difference with our other students, our historically underserved student populations? So we've then re-engaged that work with new strategies. I don't want, I don't know what that number is today, but after recognizing we didn't make the move we wanted to, we've gone deeper to see if we can address that differently now.
I think that's really helpful. I'd also like to see, have we engaged the students too, to see, you know, what is the barrier, what is keeping those, the students that we would really like to promote those coursework to, from and rolling in those courses? So from both ends, having that student voice, that's how we can make this better.
I actually have experience in doing that very recently in my last place. We got to work with equal, equal opportunity schools where they're really focused on first-generation kids and specifically kids of color, and there are some very specific strategies you, you use with different groups of kids to get them interested, then to support them. We are taking a look at that to see if we're ready to do that, and if not this year, I mean, there are pieces to it. What I know is when you do that, we have to get ready in the budget to purchase more AP books.
Right.
And the supports that go with them. I also wanted to respond to your, your comment about MTSS, just because there's so much going on in our joint work across our departments that we don't have time always to bring it to the board, and I just want you to know that we are starting on a strategy that's coming right now in February to have all of our leaders brought on board, as well as our TOSs and our coaches, in building consensus on our MTSS model, and we have specialists coming to help us with that. Everybody will be in a two-day experience. One of the things that we've noticed as we work closely together is that sometimes we talk about these frameworks or these best practices, but we don't know if we're all talking about really the same thing. And so we are taking the time, each time when we notice we're just sort of talking up here, and we're not really sure what everyone's talking about and what it looks like, sounds like, feels like in the classroom, we're slowing down, taking time to do that at this level. And sometimes people say, oh, that's taken us a long time to do it that way. But it's not worth it to move forward if we're not going to make sure that we're in consensus, it's aligned, and that the way we're looking at it across every department and every office for the different groups of kids, as well as the different work and content areas. We have to look at all of that at one time. So we're really excited because this is the first time, I think, ever there's been a strategy where every single one of those leaders will be involved and will come out with a common, shared understanding of what our MTSS model and RTI process looks like. And then we'll engage then on how we start bringing school teams with administrators and teachers into that process. So you will definitely see that in the budget.
Great. So I just wanted to provide a comment about your question about the AP and IB. So back in the fall when we had the discussion about instructional hours, we did get a lot of data that I think would be great to marry now with this graduation data, because we had data by school disaggregated of students who were taking CTE classes and also AP and IB classes. And your point is an excellent one about looking at the connections between graduations and also whether they're getting the courses, having access to the courses that will, I think, help them fulfill our other goals for students, because we want them to graduate, but we also want them to be ready for college and career. And what the data shows is we have a long ways to go, and some of our schools are providing access. And I know this board, previously, I don't think, I'm not sure if anybody was on the board when it passed, but the AP and the IB bill of rights was designed to sort of not only provide budgetary support, but also to be really clear that we are going to be affirmatively scheduling students in for those classes. So I think sort of the, the next level of the present, the, the data that would be helpful is to marry all these pieces together so we could really go deep on not just the graduation, but the college and career readiness. And I think one thing in the data that is worth pulling out is the high school that had the largest gain, which was Cleveland, that they're a school that has adopted IB for all for IB English and IB History. So it shows that exposing all students to rigorous coursework and providing them with the supports translates into, I think, real progress for our students and the opportunity to do whatever they want when they leave our high schools.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of that, that that is true, that Cleveland saw some. Congratulations for the gains that they've seen, and that's a good point. One last thing that I wanted to address was the gap that we have for English learner students. I know that there are neighboring districts that are now requiring all new teachers to, to come already with an ESL endorsement. That's new in Oregon and other states like California, where I come from, that coursework is embedded in all initial school licenses. So I don't know, I mean, if we want to see changes, we might want to really be looking at the requirements that we have in this district for our teachers, since we are such a diverse district, and that's certainly a longer conversation, but without, you know, teachers having the knowledge and skills, it's going to be hard to really close those gaps, so.
Well, I think you have to look at that, but also we need to create pathways and also partnerships.
Yes.
Right, so.
Absolutely.
We are working on those as well.
Great. Comments?
Dr. Curtis, did you use an acronym without explaining what it was? Yeah. MTSS. MTSS.
Probably I owe three quarters.
Multi-tiered Systems of Support. And could you just give a, three bullet points on?
Multi-tiered Systems of Support, three bullets on that?
Yeah, just.
So it's ensuring that all students get Level One, which is core, and that it's accessible to all kids and they have the support there. Then when you're looking at the data, which is the.
Now you need to talk, I'm, I'm looking for a, something in English. For our viewing audience.
All the core content. So it doesn't matter what class you're in, all students should have access to that grade-level core content, if you're in math, if you're in reading, whatever, writing, English, language arts. And that we need to be providing the supports for students to be successful. We need to continually be looking at their progress throughout a semester and providing interventions and other supports. Some students, the way it breaks out, if you are fully implementing MTSS, your multi-tiered Systems of Support would be that hopefully no more than 20%, eventually no more than 10%, would need more intensive interventions. Those might be classroom, different kinds of classroom supports from the classroom teacher. And then you, you will probably also continue to have, even when it's fully implemented, you'll have some students that need even more intensive on top of all the core, then the Level Two interventions.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I'd like to see a presentation on our strategies with Native American students.
Good point.
Secondly, when we talk to students at Alliance and the Transition Program, we hear a lot about, I, I was pushed out of my comprehensive high school. I'd like to see a push-out rate for our comprehensive high schools.
The data breakdown?
Yeah, for, for each of the school. Because that's, that's the other end that doesn't show, the graduation rates can look great at those schools because those kids that have been pushed out don't show up in those statistics. So I'd like to kind of flip the telescope around and look at things from that end. Does that make sense?
Yes. We provide the data. I also want to say, as we all learn more about trauma-informed care practices and what we need to do in our environments, what we'll do is try to break down data a little bit more around what the needs are and what needs are being able to address in other settings too. Because, you know, there, there's a benefit when kids find the right environment. It doesn't necessarily mean that, that the school pushed them out. It might be that there's just a lot of students at the school. So I, I want to be cautious about how we talk about what programs students participate in, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If I may.
And, and I just hear too many kids say, I got pushed out of my, I raised my hand, nobody would call on me. You know, we've, we've heard that from, even if it's a handful of students, it's too many, but it's more than a handful.
That's part of our ongoing equity work.
Your comment, Director Bailey, because we were there listening to all that testimony together from our students describe, in whatever way, the comprehensive wasn't serving their specific needs. And so we can always do better. And I think we should start by finding out where, where are they exiting from? I think we're talking tonight, and I know on Thursday in our leadership meeting, we talked a lot about the rates, a little bit generally about our comprehensives. But as I shared with Principal Lorna Bass Buffalo recently, we really have to give a shout out to our multiple pathways programs and in particular Alliance because it's sort of a relative rate, you know, when we compare. And what's important to recognize is some pretty significant growth in the students that they're able to reconnect with and bring in and have them graduate with their diplomas. I just want to make sure and give a shout out to all of the Alliance educators and leaders for, for their work and making sure our rate is actually as good as it looks. Thanks.
And if we had a six-year or a seven-year rate up here, it would be even more. We've heard some pretty moving testimony from a 21-year-old.
That's just what I was going to add to Superintendent's remarks is seeing the difference in those five-year rates. And especially, we didn't have the information contained here, but when we look at the mobility of our students and how many of our students are coming into high school at different points, well below where they need to be. And it just takes that time to, to catch up. So I'm glad that as a state, we have the space to invest in that for those kids now. I appreciate the recommendation to bring back seven, six- and seven-year rates as well because that helps us create a culture of saying to kids, it might take you longer. It doesn't matter. But you can stay here and we're going to support you and you can graduate. Doesn't matter how old you are.
Well, thank you again for all of the hard work.
Real quickly, the, the graph with the history and the big jump way back when, you almost should drop that because what happened in 2010, 11 was that there was a ton of data cleanup that happened. And I believe, an estimate was that two-thirds of that increase was due to cleaner data rather than anything improved output. So you, you might want to think about that.
I did, I did want to say that the data you were asking for with regards to Reconnection Center, we have that data. We pulled that data as high schools because we wanted to see that ourselves. And we've begun unpacking that and examining that data as site by site to kind of better understand that ourselves.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, so before I ask my question, I'm just going to start with a definitive statement, which is I want to thank the staff and the students. I'd say job well done for the, the results that we saw. So I'm going to end that with an explanation point before I ask my question because I, I know that's a lot of hard, result of a lot of hard work, focus, energy, and commitment. So I have a question about the, the other side of the numbers, which are the, the students that we, that don't graduate. The first is the state, I believe, requires after 10 days, the student doesn't show up at school, that it's an automatic drop.
That's correct.
So I'd like to know what specifically we do because in the past, they just got dropped. And then maybe they got caught a year later during a reconnection. But, you know, what, what happens on that 11th day when somebody removes a student from the, the roles?
So that's one of the jobs of our current student engagement coaches. So at all of our high schools, we have a dedicated person who is monitoring that data every day for, and reaching out to students and reaching out to families at the three-day, the five-day, the eight-day, doing home visits. So our student engagement coaches, they are carrying a caseload of 30 students, so really targeting the, the chronic absence students and building relationships and working both with families, with counselors. So that's a strategy that we have been implementing the last two years.
So when they get to 10 days, what happens? That's, first of all, I should say, that's great. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that all that engagement is, is happening and encouraging students to come back to school. But on that 10th day when we're required to drop them, what, what does the district do?
I think it is probably case by case or school by school, depending upon what the resources are. But it's a really valid question that I'd like to go back and actually ask, ask each of our sites.
Okay, just be good to know. So that was one question, but I'm glad to hear that with, on the way up to the 10, 10 days, that there's active engagement. And then the second question I had is what sort of analysis?
We actually, we actually have.
You can actually give me the answer?
Yeah, yeah, actually Matt Edie, who is here, he's in charge of Reconnection Services here, and he can answer your question.
Like I said, I want to make sure that it's the same answer at every school, not just at some schools.
Good evening. So when the system is working as it is designed, after a student is 10-day dropped, they're referred to Reconnection Services. So then Reconnection Services, we have a team of seven outreach coordinators. They're all carrying a caseload of 150s. And they'll follow up with the school, the family, and the student to identify what was at the root of that disengagement and then help the family explore and access their educational options. Now, we recognize that the system doesn't always work like that. So once a month, our data analyst runs a report to identify all students who've withdrawn during that period, have not been referred to Reconnection Services, and have not re-enrolled in a public school district in Oregon. We then take that list to school staff to see if we can get a little bit more detail and nuance about what's happening with that family. It is entirely possible that a counselor or a student engagement coach is in the process of trying to re-engage that student. When that isn't the case, our Reconnection Services staff reaches out to the student and the family. And then in the summer, we run that report again and identify all students who were withdrawn during the school year, were not referred to Reconnection Services, and did not re-enroll in another district in the state of Oregon. And we reach out to those families in the summer. We then do that again at the beginning of the school year where we do our annual door-knocking event. So there are several redundant systems in place to ensure that no student falls through the cracks. And it is sort of the, the mission and the mandate of our department to make sure that any student who disengages from education, there is, there is an adult who's a Portland Public School staff member who contacts them and says, we notice you're not in school. We care and we want you back.
So for schools where we had like 15% of the students not graduating, they all, the system's working, they all would have had those multiple touchpoints?
Yes.
So just another question. Thank you for that answer. I'm glad to hear that our system is no longer, once they're gone for 10 days, they're gone. The, the other question is whether we've looked at the data regarding when we lose students? So we have the sort of ninth, ninth grade on track, but clearly, and those numbers are improving. But clearly something's happening between the ninth grade on track and the other years. And so maybe a longer discussion for another day. But are we looking at that data? Are we seeing trends? And are we building systems to respond to it? Or are we going to be building things into the budget?
So I would, I would answer that question by saying yes and yes. Most, what's probably most important to understand is that the systems we're talking about with freshman success, those systems aren't even two years old yet, okay? And the growth that we displayed in our presentation, that's from one year to the next. We know that difference. But one of the things we've discovered is that that's a very successful system in regards to tracking students and their needs. And what we'd like to be able to do is replicate that for sophomores, for juniors. Because when we've got that service, that wraparound attention to the student and what their student needs are and what their successes are and their struggles are, and we're able to actually identify them and, and meet with them, we're able to make a significant difference. In our largest of high schools, we're able to make a significant difference. And so, so this is some of the work that's come out of Measure 98 for us, and it's pretty new still, but we're having some real success with it and we're very excited about it. And we're trying to find ways to replicate that work to go forward.
One last thing. In the past, Portland Community College, I think among other institutions, has reported a, what percent of our graduates are need remedial math or English? If we could have, is there an update on those numbers?
I can get that for you.
Okay.
I do have that. I don't have it for tonight, but.
Okay.
Can you send that to the board?
Yeah, guessing. I'm not the only one. And also many years ago, we had a cohort of graduates who were freshmen in college come back and tell us how, what their experience was. You know, and in our, in our visioning process, we're asking people, what, what do you want to see in our graduates? And it's not just a diploma, it's skills and knowledge. I'd really love to have a, I went to college, I came back, and I'm prepared or not prepared or somewhere in between and to hear firsthand from, from some of our graduates.
We have a great group of students who might fit that category. Through our Gear Up, our Mobilizing for College, we have near-peer mentors. And those are students who have graduated from our high schools and they're either at PCC or PSU and they actually come back and mentor students in the classroom in some of our high schools. So they have a really interesting view as they went through our high schools. They're in college and now they're coming back and working in our high schools.
So nice connection.
Yeah, that, that'd be great.
This is a great area, so we're pleased to see the upward trend continue. And our, our, our mission is to prepare our graduates for a college career. And so I think I would love to see statewide more longitudinal data around college persistence. I think you will find many of the higher ed institutions don't even come close to these kinds of outcomes. But we certainly want to see where our students are gainfully employed and what sectors of industry they're looking at. We want to make sure that our students have been prepared adequately to be successful in their, in their future. And where it is working well, what are the supports that are being put in place with them that maybe we should think about in the K-12 atmosphere as well?
And, and I know there are issues with the links between, you know, coming right out of high school and going into an apprenticeship program. I think the, last I checked, the average age of apprentices, where apprentices were like 27 or something like that, which is very contradictory to the European experience where you have, you know, students going right into that. I, I think that might be another point, data point that we might want to build into our dashboard. And again, some, some relationships to be built to help, help our students, one, find, find that goal early on in high school through a CTE experience and be able to make that jump at an earlier age to, you know. I think there's some construction companies who are really looking for employees right now.
Well, thank you so much for the hard work and the myriad opportunities that students have in the ways that we're engaging them and for sharing some good news and continuing the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, for this item, the board will be acting in their capacity as the Contract Review Board. So Superintendent Gettler, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Yes, for, for this agenda item, I'd like to have Emily Kortnich, our Director of Purchasing and Contracting, come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we have others playing a supporting role tonight.
Thank you. Welcome.
So we're here tonight to talk about the Districtwide Security Upgrades Project, which we call the Secure Schools Project. We're seeking an exemption from the standard low bid process that is usually required under Oregon law for construction projects and permission to proceed with a fully competitive request for proposals procurement process. A little bit about the Secure Schools Project, and we have Darren Lee, who is the project manager for OSM, Office of School Modernization, and he can give more detail. But this is a security upgrade at about 88 schools. It includes door and access control, public address speakers, video monitors, and associated cable switches, data recorders. We intend to issue three separate requests for proposals with work divided into roughly equal packages of schools. The benefits of the RFP process here, well, the work scope includes design, procurement, installation, programming, and training. So it's more than your typical construction project. This is not well-suited to a low bid process in which the work must be fully designed and scoped before it can be bid out. As I said, this work includes design as part of the scope. Through the RFP process, we can procure highly qualified, experienced contractors experienced in this kind of design and installation. And then as always, through the RFP process, we can evaluate not only specialized experience and cost, but also commitment to seeking subcontracts with certified businesses.
I just, I'd like to say thank you for all the outreach that has gone on already with certified.
some of those businesses with these opportunities because I believe the nature of some of this work is small in terms of each individual project or how many projects might be packaged together. So, this is a great opportunity and it also allows us to be more nimble in terms of getting the work done more quickly and getting our contractors out in the field. And we know that our schools, our communities are really anxious to get all this underway. So, thank you and I'm fully in support of this process and appreciative of all your efforts. Thank you. Aiden?
Other questions, comments from the board?
Just bigger picture, would ask, we've done this a couple of times for, so just some feedback on the results of using this process because there's a number of benefits for doing this in terms of quality and time and also ability to engage with minority and women-owned subcontractors. So, some feedback on that that says, "Yeah, this is working." I know we did that a lot with the health and safety issues around the schools.
Right. And we do get data back on that, on our dashboard for the school modernization and the bond-funded work, but I'm not sure that on a regular basis, we get data back on the non-bond-funded pieces of this work, which I think some of this is, some of this security work here is, just falls under facilities maintenance, correct? And some of it is bond-funded?
No, this is all bond-funded.
This is all, this just pertains to the bond-funded? Okay, so we do see that data then on our dashboard.
That's been pretty positive.
Very positive, yeah.
So, just to follow on that, so I think in the bond that it was earmarked as $5 million initially and this is an $8 million package, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, it's been a $3 million increase from what initially was put earmarked in the bond for the security?
Yeah, a little bit of history. Originally, in the scope of work that went into the bond was, majority for security was fencing. And so, there's a lot of staff turnover who created the scope of work through the original bond. And once the bond passed, the district had to go into kind of a redesign and reevaluation if fencing was the proper way and it came back that actually security and locking doors and cameras was the way to go. So, during that entire process, starting back in summer '18, all departments got together and reevaluated what the scope truly should be. And so, that's more of why the cost difference is we went from fencing to those front-end security upgrades across all schools.
Great, well, I'm glad to see it, just we're going to have another agenda item that potentially relates to Security Night. So, this is a pretty significant commitment by the district into a whole host of things that should make our schools generally more safe. And it looks like it touches all 88 schools?
Yep.
Great.
And that's what's so great about this work, even though it represents a larger investment, that's not because the work itself is that expensive, unlike some things we see in our bond program. It really represents a lot of small projects at all of our schools that people are going to be able to see and that our families are already asking for, so.
Great, thank you. Did you have something? Okay, I will now open the public hearing for the alternative contracting method. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public comment? Thank you.
Ms. Houston?
I have no one listening.
No one, okay, great. The board will now consider Resolution 5801, Secure Schools Project, exemption from competitive bidding and authorization for use of a request for proposals, alternative contracting method. Do I have a motion?
Is it moved?
Second. Moved by Director Brim Edwards and Director Constan seconds the motion. Okay, is there any more board discussion on the resolution? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5801. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Paul and Rita still on the phone?
I heard a squeak.
Director Moore? Board Chair Moore?
Maybe not, okay.
It's a little late there.
Yeah, it's pretty late, Becky, so. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
Sorry, sorry, we were on mute.
Okay, your vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay, Resolution 5801 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Thank you. The board will now return to its regular meeting. Okay, and I'm watching for the clock because as I said, we will stop what we're, we may be in the middle of to hear the resolution to suspend approval of an IGA between the City of Portland through the Portland Police Bureau and PPS at 8:25. Okay, now the second reading of Student Representative Policy. The board held a first meeting of this policy on December 11th, 2018, and the policy has been posted for public comment since that time. The board is now ready to vote on an amended policy, so I'd like to ask Director Brim Edwards, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, to provide an overview of this amended policy.
Thank you, Chair Sparza Brown. So, this has been before the board before, and last time it was before the board, there was a discussion about the preamble and how the, what the role of the student rep, how it was framed. And so, it was sent back to the committee for a reframing, which we have done. And I want to say we've done, but there's more work, there's more work to do. So, working with the student representative, we changed the focus of the preamble to this policy. And so, what you're seeing tonight is the amended policy. I will say, there was a lot of discussion with the student representative and other board members about going back and reviewing all of this. And I think we have a commitment that you're going to come back with a sort of fuller set of potential revisions, sort of modernizing it and bringing some, elevating student voice and student, not just student voice, but student engagement into our policymaking process. So, I don't know if you want to speak at all to that?
Yeah, no, I'm really excited about this. So, I think, I guess the best way I can describe it tonight is the amendments is just a little change in the policy and we did give comment on that. So, I think it's going to sound better in the beginning, we're more focused on student engagement and student voice in the beginning and the preamble. But this is a very small part of more of the work that's going to be coming forward in a couple of months. So, I've been meeting very rigorously with my representation council of the district and the students and I are working on putting more meat, for lack of a better term, into the policy for, to get, to engage students in a more effective and efficient way, to get stronger representation from at least all the high schools and we might branch out from there as well. So, a lot of additions and changes coming, but all for the good and, yeah, I'm excited for the work moving forward, so, yeah, thank you.
Great, and I should say that this has always come out of the committee with unanimous recommendation for approval and we, since we revised it, we haven't had any additional public comment, so.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider Resolution 5799, Amendment of Board of Education Policy 1.20.010-P and Student Representative Duties Policy 1.20.012-P. Do I have a motion? So, move?
Second.
Director Constan moves and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5799. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on Resolution 5799? There is not. Okay, thank you. Is there any board discussion, further discussion on this resolution?
Just that I think that we're getting a lot of information coming out of the visioning process about how students want to be engaged in decision-making in the future and how we all want to see students come forward. So, I think that's going to be an important part of this evolving relationship and I know it's a priority of the superintendents too, so thanks, Nick, for all your work on this.
Thank you, yeah, really excited.
Yeah, so it is going to be exciting to see this pause to be called. Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5799. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Rita, Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5799 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to a first reading, policy rescissions. Hey, look, we're almost back on time, we're ahead of time now. We'll now have a first reading of five policy rescissions and I'd like to ask that Director Brim Edwards introduce them, please.
Thank you, Chair Sparza Brown.
So, the board, Policy and Governance Committee is, been, it's in a year-long process of updating our policies and removing policies that are outdated, duplicative or unneeded. And so, as people may have noticed, if they've been watching our board meeting, we have generally a handful to a dozen coming on a regular basis to the board and we have another group of those this evening. I'm just going to move through them relatively quickly because since this is the first reading. First, we have Salary Schedule 5.50.030. We're proposing this be rescinded because the policy has no content. Next, we have another policy on Recruitment Selection and Appointment, 5.70.010. And this policy is outdated, unnecessary and it was last updated in 1983. The third policy is a policy related to payroll deductions, 5.70.053. This policy does not reflect current practice and is not needed for the district to administer payroll deductions. It was last updated in 1992. We have a, next, a policy that is the permanent teacher status, 5.20.090. Policy's not needed as permanent teacher status is governed by statute and it was last updated in 1978, before he graduated from high school, just to note. Then, the last policy, which is going to merit just a slightly longer mention, is the Teacher and Principal Assignment Select Schools, 5.20.051. And this is, relates to sort of community engagement and parent involvement in principal assignment, which raises a question for me about our, the recommendation to rescind it. However, I think it's important to note that this is, there is another policy that exists that is much more expansive and the one that we're recommending be rescinded is dated and duplicative. And the other one that we have is, again, much more current. I believe Director Bailey was involved in the development of this.
2001.
2001. And it could, the one that's on the books. So, I just want to make sure that people don't think that we're eliminating that as a policy because we have another one on the books. So, all five of these policies were discussed and reviewed in the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. They were recommended by the committee for a first reading and if there's any public comment, it'll be considered at our next Policy and Governance Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, board members.
Just real quickly, apropos the parent and community and student engagement and principal selection that is on the books, let's just say we've heard from a lot of people that it is not being authentically implemented over the years. So, that's something I think we need to look at the policy and also the implementation of that sometime in the near future.
Any other comments, questions?
All right, the proposed policy rescissions will be posted on the board website and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment being February 19th, 2019. The board will hold a second reading of the policy rescissions at their February, at our next February 26th meeting. All right, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we're a little early, Resolution to rescind approval of an IGA between the City of Portland through the Portland Public, Portland Police Bureau and Portland Public Schools. At our last board meeting, Director Brim Edwards indicated that she would be bringing a resolution tonight regarding our intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Police Bureau regarding the School Resource Officers, or SROs. Before we get to the resolution itself, we wanted to give an update on the status of the discussions with the city. Even though our efforts to solicit student input in December were cut short by an unrealistic deadline and inaccurate information, we heard a great deal of consensus amongst students around a number of issues and we are now actively engaged with the city to address some of those concerns. On January 14th, Chair Moore, Superintendent Guerrero and the mayor met and it was made clear that the IGA as approved in December was no longer acceptable to the board and would need substantial reconsideration. So, we emerged from that meeting with several tentative agreements about how to proceed. We made a clear, one, that PPS is unwilling to use our limited resources to subsidize the police since public safety is an essential city responsibility. Tonight's resolution memorializes the agreement to withdraw any financial commitment from the school district. Two, we heard many concerns from students and community members about having armed police officers in schools. During our meeting, we agreed to explore alternative methods to preserve student safety in ways that would contribute to a more welcoming school environment for all of our students. And third, staff from the district and the city are currently engaged in further discussions. We anticipate having initial revisions to the IGA responding to the concerns that emerged in December, available by the end of February for discussion. Staff are working with students to develop a process for consulting with students in a meaningful way before we finalize anything with the city. We understand that the SRO issue is a critically important concern for students and the community and in particular, students of color. And the board shares an interest in finding ways to preserve safety without sacrificing students' civil rights or sense of comfort in community in their schools. Now that we have more time, we intend to use this issue as a first step towards developing mechanisms to institutionalize regular, meaningful student consultation in district decision-making. Okay, so I'd like to ask Director Brim Edwards to introduce the resolution.
Thank you, Chair Sparza Brown. Ms. Houston, do we have a resolution number? We just had one passed out.
It is 5807.
Here you go. And is the one that's being passed the same as the one that was in the board packet? We just got a new one that was passed, I'm assuming it's the same?
Yes, it is.
Is it the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Resolution 5807, as Chair Sparza Brown noted, this was a rushed decision that was based on a false deadline. I had a conversation with the mayor in both mid-December after the vote and again in early January in which we spoke about the deadline and the impact it had on our community. And it was clear at that time that we were going to have a lot more time to have a conversation. So, I think the question may be, so why do we need to formally suspend the cost sharing and the other sections of this agreement if we're having positive discussions with the city? I think it's a legitimate question. So, there's three reasons to, that this resolution and its resolved portion would both suspend the proposed cost sharing, but also suspend the approval of the other sections of the proposed intergovernmental agreement. And the three reasons are, it formally provides the time for discussion with our students and it makes it clear that we're going to take the time that we're going to need. Second, it'll formally signal to the city that the cost shift to the PPS is going to be reassessed and that, you know, it's like, I think in a conversation I had with the superintendent, it's like when you're going to buy a house and you put an offer on the table, you don't just leave an offer on the table for an extended period of time, so we need to formally ... you don't just leave an offer on the table for an extended period of time, so we need to formally withdraw the offer to, to, um, cost share. Um, I said at the time of the vote that I really believe that the public safety, um, and the city is the city's responsibility, and our co-responsibility is educating students. And the third reason why we would formally suspend, um, the approval of the IGA from the district standpoint is that, um, if we don't suspend it, it's still on the table, and both our money and our provisions are still sitting on the table, and we need to pull them back so that we can have a fuller discussion. Um, and I think it'll be important, I know I learned a lot in the brief period of time that we had before the, um, the December vote, um, about the training, um, the role of school resource officers, you know, what, what our students felt about them, um, and there was a variety, a whole variety of opinions. Um, our principals had points of view, um, but if we, um, suspend this, it will have, give us formally an opportunity to have this broader discussion without, I think, um, what could be perceived by the community as a, an approved agreement, sort of hanging out there and that it's all a done deal and that we're not going to change anything, so, um, this will just formally suspend it so we can have that conversation.
Thank you. The board will now consider Resolution, uh, five eight oh seven. Resolution to suspend approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Portland through the Portland Police Bureau and Portland Public Schools. Do I have a motion and second on Resolution five eight oh seven?
So moved.
Uh, okay, uh, direct, moved by Director Bailey and seconded by Director Constam for the adoption of Resolution five eight oh seven. Is there any board discussion?
I wanna thank, go ahead, Nick. I see to student representative.
Okay, so just before we vote on this, um, suspension of the IGA, I'd like to state that, um, a little background real quick. So I was given, in late November, I was given just under, just about, just under three weeks, about two weeks, to get student input on this IGA. Um, time was of, time, time was of the essence, um, to my, in my opinion, of the ci, on the city's side, and I don't think it was on our side. So I'm really happy to be seeing the suspension tonight. Um, I'd also like to add that just yesterday at eight AM, I found out that Cleveland High School, my home school, just lost our, uh, just lost our SRO, our SRO for our cohort. Um, the SRO has been moved to the Wilson Cohort, which I thought was a very interesting thing, um, and at this point, I'm a little confused what we're even paying for. As my own school just lost our SRO on our side of this, our side of the city. So I'm, again, really excited to see that we're gonna take our time to get more student input, and I've been working with a lot of, um, board and ELT staff to make sure we're gonna get, uh, more student input on this, um, and that it's actually gonna count. So, thank you.
Director Constam?
I wanna thank all of our students for coming forward when this vote was originally before the board, especially given, um, the short amount of time that Nick and others had to organize students. And I wanna say, I think it's a black mark on our board that we did not delay at that time as Director Bailey, um, proposed. Uh, I think, uh, it wasn't clear that we had to act by the end of the year, and we, um, there shouldn't be a time when expediency trumps student voice in our decision-making. And so, um, I'm glad that we appear to be on the road to doing the right thing now. There's a lot of discussions that, um, we still need to have about the role of the SROs. We do hear a lot from our administrators and our students about the value that they have when they're really trained to work with students. Um, and I also think it's a good reminder that, um, this whole conversation is not about cops or no cops in our schools, because, um, we do have many instances, including serious crimes, that take place in our buildings and on our grounds, and they don't always involve students. Much of the time, they're adult issues, but they do involve the police. So we wanna, um, make sure that those interactions are safe and are focused on our students' well-being. So I'm glad that we have the opportunity for more conversation, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to, really have a deeper conversation with the City of Portland and with the Police Bureau about, um, if your role and responsibility is public safety, then your role should be to do it in the most thoughtful way. And if as a community, we really believe in community policing, then what does that look like, um, when it comes to responding to incidents in our schools? So, uh, I do think that we're gonna end up at a much better resolution, um, at the end, and I thank all of our students for coming forward and for your activism and, and all the administrators who've supported you, too.
Thank you.
So just to expand a little bit, if, uh, I appreciate the board's, uh, our stance on, uh, uh, given, given the false deadline to, to look at this issue deeper, and, um, if the board pleases, uh, staff is prepared to share just a quick overview of student engagement plans that are emerging either before or after the vote, if you like, uh, in the way that we would like to do. And so, um, now with, uh, a heavy week of, uh, visioning activity and lots of Benson and Multiple Pathway meetings that have taken place, and a request by students to wait till after finals, uh, we're prepared to, to think about how we spend the next six to eight weeks, you know, really engaging our, our students around issues of school safety and also the role of SROs and what an agreement might look like to codify a relationship that, that works for us. So, uh, Vice Chair Asparza Brown, if you wanna hear a little two-minute overview of what we're thinking about, some of that student engagement might include, um, before or after your vote?
Yes, that would be fine now, and then we'll continue to take comments from the board, um, and then public testimony.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask our senior director Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff Sodin, and potentially our advisor on equity Danny Ledesma, uh, as well as our senior director of communications.
Thank you Superintendent Jonathan Garcia, Senior Director of Strategic Partnerships.
Good evening. Stephanie Cameron, Senior Director of Communications and Public Engagement.
Good evening. Danny Ledesma, I'm the special advisor on racial equity and social justice.
Stephanie Sodin, Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
So what was clear to, to us as staff was really making sure that, uh, we outlined our values when it came to student voice. So we have begun to draft, uh, a couple of value statements about the importance of student voice in, in this conversation. Uh, we, we know based on, uh, literature and research, there are different ways to engage students, and, and so we wanna be very intentional, uh, on, with regards to this process to, to ensure that, that, that students have, decision-making, um, supports, um, in place for, uh, continued conversation. And so, uh, what we've outlined as, um, uh, and what we've drafted, uh, for, for us to, to begin thinking about, we've broken it out into th, three phases. Phase one will be to engage all of our, all of our high schools, uh, and introduce the student, uh, voice process regarding SROs. So we will engage, uh, we'll work with our principals to identify, uh, student groups, individual students who are interested in having this conversation, and begin to, uh, you know, to, to create some clear outcomes and clear goals for the conversation, uh, as part of phase one. Again, the goal is to, to engage every, uh, school i, in the process. As well as we are in conversation with, uh, advisors of ethnic student organizations such as BSUs, the Mechas, uh, Native Circles, to really be intentional of how we target, uh, you know, students, uh, of color in this conversation. Uh, we have, uh, begun to talk about hosting a summit that will in, incorporate not only, uh, this conversation, but the conversation of ensuring that students, uh, of color have, uh, intentional voice, um, uh, around our vision and around, uh, student voice generally. And so in phase two, once we've, uh, identified, you know, I've had a chance to have conversations with all of our students at all of our high schools, we will, um, be requesting of those students, uh, to identify two to three student leaders, uh, that can serve as representatives in ongoing conversations between the board, uh, staff, uh, and, and really go line by line in really understanding the role of the IGA, the, uh, understanding the, the, the impact of the IGA, and really go, uh, again, line by line in really addressing, uh, student concern and student voice in that process. Our goal is to have three, uh, sessions, um, uh, again, of, of these student groups, so you're looking at twenty students in total, engaging in, in serious dialogue with, with staff and the Board of Education to really, um, uh, address, again, the, the concern. So we'll, we'll do, uh, three sessions of those, uh, and, and the hope is that in these three sessions, we're able to come to, uh, an agreement on, uh, the IGA moving forward and, uh, prior to a vote for the board, uh, from the Board of Education. In phase three, uh, once we've, uh, come to an agreement, um, you know, with, uh, with student voice and student, uh, voice at the center, we will, uh, mobilize, uh, our students and, uh, our staff to, once again, engage the district, uh, engage students district-wide. And so, again, strategy's to be determined, but again, we wanna start, uh, really ensuring that all students have access to this, this information, uh, and, and have, uh, an opportunity to share opinion and thought. So again, this is a draft, uh, working, work plan, uh, for student engagement as it relates to, to this conversation about SROs. Uh, our hope is that once we've, uh, you know, have defined and, and, and refined this process, that we will continue to, to use, again, literature and other efforts, uh, to, um, to, to solidify our, uh, student voice process.
Great, thank you. Any other additions here?
I think what I would just add, I think Jonathan has such a, a clear vision. We, we all have the, a good, good fortune to be able to, to debrief some of the conversations, and Director Rosen was with us. And what we heard from students is that they are really, um, passionate about their experiences. They have lots of, uh, good ideas. And we really want to see this opportunity as a way to think about how we can more strategically think about how, not only to engage with students and to involve students, but to really activate students so that they have not only voice and decision-making in an agency in the policies that are impacting them. And so I think we're all really, this team is really excited about, thinking about how we can, um, really sort of take this, this, this moment of learning and thinking about how we can engage in a strategic effort to, to really put student voice at the center.
Great, and I'm really happy to hear about, um, the kinds of groups and engagement efforts that you'll make for our community partners to make sure that some of our students group, who, groups who may not necessarily, um, trust all adults, you know, but, um, with those culturally specific groups that will help us get to authentic dialogue. So, um, kudos, that sounds like a great process. Um, other comments or questions for the group?
If I could just add, I just wanna say, as the superintendent often says, we're a, a learning organization, and, um, what occurred in December, those student engagement sessions were a first step. We don't really have a structure at, at PPS for engaging students wholeheartedly across the district in a really genuine and authentic way. We're working on that. Nick's a big part of that. But we learned a lot from that, and we learned a lot from the conversation, um, just a week ago at Jefferson. I wasn't there, but this team was, and I'm really fortunate to have a group that's helping me think through how we do this better this time. So I'm really pleased to have this group helping me out.
Great, um, one more question. So beyond the, um, just diverse student groups, some kids with disabilities and, um, special needs, so, um, plans for engagement and how we outreach to all kids?
Definitely.
Great.
Well, I was gonna say, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, as a district, to find what we mean by inclusive, inclusion. Uh, and so I think that we wanna make sure that all of our efforts around engaging students are, sort of, really speak to that.
Great. Okay, other?
So, I just wanted to thank the team. Um, I was at the Jefferson discussion, and it was clear there was a lot of passion around students communicating on this issue, so I really support the clear direction you're taking. I also think it's gonna be really important to engage parents and staff, and I hope that we're thinking about how to do that, too. We've gotten a lot of feedback over email and some discussions we've had at visioning sessions involve staff and students, and I think they have, um, staff and parents, and I think they have a good perspective. So I'm gonna vote for suspending the IGA for all the reasons Julia said. One of the things I've been thinking about since we voted on it is really the issue of funding, and whether this is a service that the city should be funding on its own or a service that the district should be funding. It's a large cost, and it seems like it's been, it must be a cost-effective program because it's keeping students out of the juvenile justice system. So I'm just curious, I feel like we don't really know yet what the motivation is of the city to shift the costs to the district. So I wanna learn more about that, and I'm really leaning toward not shifting the costs to the district since it seems like this is a fundamental service that the city should be providing in the best way they know how, um, to the district, so.
Comment on that. Um, so I think, um, thank, thank you, by the way. Looking forward to discussions. So just on that point, I think I sat at this board table fifteen years ago, um, when the PPS did have, um, its own sort of police force. There was a PPS police force, and at the time, um, I think we were the only district in the state that paid for its own, and we, you know, it's pre, it's right after, um, measure five, and we had a lot fewer resources. And there was a big discussion at the time about who should be paying, and, um, there was a discussion with the city about that. And the decision was that this was more appropriately paid for by, by the city. In fact, all the surrounding districts, um, of Portland all had municipal, um, service provided. So I think it's a great discussion. I will say we had it before, and the city leadership at the time recognized that it was their responsibility to ensure that all citizens, um, including our students, were safe. And then, um, I guess, I, I've seen some comments, um, online about, um, why wouldn't the school district pay? You know, the Blazers, when they get security, they, they have to pay for it, and I would just say, we're not a profit-making enterprise. Um, and that, um, our, our enterprise mission is to educate students, and we should devote every last dollar to that. So I think we should resist mightily reopening that, and it sounds like that's already underway. I also would say, just in terms of the funds, um, that we've already voted tonight to dedicate eight point nine million dollars to, uh, infrastructure, um, improvements for our security and safety, um, purposes for our facilities. And I think that's a, a pretty significant commitment from the district on something that's appropriately, appropriate for us to, to pay.
I wanna say this is also an opportunity, um, we heard tonight from, in public testimony, some questions raised about the provision of restorative justice. And we know that the SROs and our, our provision of restorative justice services need to go hand in hand. I talked to some Madison students, a couple of whom are here tonight, uh, who raised that issue Saturday at the visioning session, about what services are actually happening at Madison, which is, came up in the earlier testimony. So, uh, and I began discussions with staff and that got immediate response. So that's also, I think, something, um, to be clarified as, as we go forward, how those services look on the ground in our high schools, and to, uh, engage our students around that as well.
I think we continue to want to see officers who have not just an understanding about how to integrate restorative practices, but also be culturally responsive, be trauma-informed, go down the list. Those are the kinds of folks that we want, uh, interacting with, uh, our youth in, in those ways. So, uh, that, that'll be something we insist on.
But it's, it's also our, our staff on our end, um, when, when we have a successful intervention and we're keeping a student out of the criminal justice system, that there's appropriate support for that student, including restorative justice, um, at, at, in our schools.
I just wanna comment on your thoughts, Superintendent, that the, the irony to me there is that, as a community, you know, we have had a lot of discussion around community policing, and the information that came forward from the Police Bureau in this process was about the training of these, uh, school resource officers and the, their background in restorative justice and their personal histories and their inclination toward de-escalation, and that they're, they're different, and they're trained in a different way than the rest of the police force. And yet, the Police Bureau is saying, um, we have these tactics which we think are much more appropriate for working with our students. We know how to do it. It's reflective of our community values around community policing. And yet, if we're going to provide that better service, um, in the school environments, uh, you're gonna have to pay extra. That, to me, doesn't really- That, to me, doesn't really make sense. It's their responsibility to respond to the needs in our schools, so why wouldn't they respond in the most evolved and appropriate way?
If I could just add, Vice Chair Sparza Brown, this topic was one that I added to the agenda of a meeting of superintendents of the Council of Great City Schools this weekend. And it was a very good discussion. Folks from around the country handle some of these specifics a little differently, but what we talked about is the need to carefully balance both standard operating protocols and agreements with their local police departments while ensuring they're fulfilling their obligation as leaders of school systems to ensure school safety. And so that's a delicate balance, and it's one that needs to involve the broader community, especially our students and the adults who work in our schools. And so I'm hopeful that, with an outlined process, which I hope we learn from through this topic, that we apply it to all future topics, and we continue to refine what engagement and voice looks like. But I'm hopeful that we'll find a balance of those needs ourselves here in Portland. I also know from conversations with some local colleagues, superintendents, that cost-sharing is really prohibitive and difficult for many of them. Although it's not uncommon in other districts in Oregon that they cost-share. So again, we have to find sort of what's the right fit for us, and we'll look forward to, now that we know that we have time, really diving into some of these issues.
Just a final note, as part of the bigger issue, and this is a self-criticism, and you can join me in that if you want to, but that's your choice. When the city pulled out of supporting our kids with TriMet bus passes, we grumbled. And that's all. When this proposal came down the pike, we grumbled, but we didn't push back. The parking lot at Grant High School that we're rebuilding, that's joint use, that we're gonna have to pay not only for the construction but the maintenance of, we grumbled and approved it. I think that's it.
So you have a chance to do something besides grumble now, so here it is.
Right, so let's vote.
What I want to add that-
If there's public comment.
Yeah. What I want to add, I want to appreciate all the students that have stayed here late tonight, too. I know some students that are in the audience tonight have taken on some work regarding this topic and the stale time between when we voted in December until now. So I really want to appreciate that, and I hope that all the directors up here will really, truly listen to what the students have to say tonight.
I, too, have a comment. And so, while I will support this resolution, I will ultimately not support a resolution for SROs in our school because I think that there's some at the roots and problems with that. And that is, when, as we were talking earlier, about that school resource officers can be trained personnel, who can be, are trained in trauma-informed practices and culturally responsive practices, but who better to be in our schools than educators who, you know, have really dedicated their careers for working with children and providing the right services for children? I'm still concerned about bringing armed officers into schools. The data doesn't bear out that schools are made any safer with armed officers. I've really researched this and looked at the data. That's my job. I am trained to look at research and data and to reach out and gather information. And the information that I gather are from people that look like me, who do not, students that do not feel safer in schools because of incidents that happen in their communities that have caused them trauma by the presence of police force and police activities. So I think that we can better support students in other ways and keep them safe, partnering with our school districts, but not necessarily having armed policemen in our schools. I know that there are incidences, and there are many reports of great relationships with some SROs in schools, and I know that. I've seen that myself, and I've heard that in diverse communities. But I think ultimately, responding to how I see it as a person of color and how I look and know about our students' backgrounds, it's still going to be a no vote for me. So with that, Ms. Houston?
I know that there's public comment, so.
Yes, we have nine individuals. And our first two speakers are Faisal Osman and Jamari Signor.
And when the light goes on, please state your names, spell your last name, and watch for the colors there.
All right.
Thank you.
My name is Jamari Signor, S-I-G-N-O-R. I come from Jefferson High School. Today, I kind of wanted just to come to give my testimony about the experience that I have had as a student and somebody who has worked through this process of being a part of the SRO agreement and the safety in schools and looking out for other students. And during this process, I believe that we have not made any further progress than what we have when we started. I don't think SROs are performing any duties in high schools. I heard at the beginning, when we went over the agreement and talked about it, they said that SROs would have specific tasks, and they would go throughout schools, and they would teach students, and they would be a resource for students in high schools. And I have not seen a resource for students, nor a, I don't know, like, I haven't seen anybody put forward any ideas of letting SRO teach or be really part of the community. I believe relationships are good, but if we're gonna give SROs all this money, I believe that they need to be doing a job. I think that the agreement could have been done better. I don't think we should have been here. I think that if we would have let students be a part of the process sooner and be part of the process the whole time, it would have made this job a lot easier. I have experienced a lot of people come support students through this process, and I've learned that we are all here to work together and that we are all trying to move towards the future. And I believe that we are going to make a lot better decisions if we all work together. I've seen a lot of really good conversation between students and staff. And throughout this world right now, students have had to gain a stronger heart. And for us to get out every day and fight gun violence, you know what I'm saying, and their own school board won't listen to you when you're talking about gun violence, I think, is just showing you how much people really care about your voice. So that's just what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Faisal Osman, O-S-M-A-N. I'm 17 years old, a junior at Madison High School, and also a member of the Multnomah Youth Commission on the Education Youth Voice Committee. I first want to start off with pointing out the inaccessibility of the scheduling of this agenda item at a time where most students find difficulty in attending. When we want to hear students' perspectives on issues that matter, it's important to always remain intentional on how accessible everything is in order to receive optimal engagement. I know many students who wanted to be here tonight but couldn't due to the time. In the last year, Madison lost our Restorative Justice Coordinator due to a contract that pulled these coordinators out of our schools. Our coordinator built profound relationships with every student at Madison and made sure everyone felt safe in our communities. Everyone knew who Nayanga was, as his role in our school created a school environment that prioritized restorative healing and problem-solving. The IGA mentions to have school resource officers emphasize on restorative practices and trauma-informed care. Yet frustrates me to hear money being utilized for police to take this role in our schools when we can't fund RJ coordinators who can do just that. What we truly need funding for is resources that combat the school-to-prison pipeline. And the absence of an RJ coordinator in our school does the opposite. As a member of the RJ club at our school, our sole mission has been to keep RJ alive. But no access to restorative justice mentors has only made things more difficult, and our capacity to make an impact in our school through the work we do has oftentimes felt challenged because of this. Think about how $1 million per year could benefit students when it's allocated towards social, emotional support from someone in the community students feel safe and comfortable around. In a restorative justice circle in my criminal justice class, we discussed our opinions on school resource officers in our community. The same curiosity I have echoes in my peers as we wonder why funding for conflict prevention is pulled and the presence of SROs is funded. Many Black and Brown students face trauma around police and policing, and choosing to increase the presence of these officers feels as if decision-makers could care less about my well-being in an environment I spend most of my time in, and I hope the decision tonight doesn't reflect that. I ask that the board rescinds to approve this IGA and to include a thorough public outreach plan that listens to student voice on this matter. I also ask the board to increase funding for restorative justice in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ben Snead and Leo Bauduin.
Come on up. Welcome.
My name is Leo Bauduin, B-A-U-D-H-U-I-N, and I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I first just wanted to quickly respond to the need for SROs, especially as a student from Franklin, where we had a student bring a gun to school last year, and just say that I haven't noticed that students at my school have sentiments that are any different from students across the district. I would like to call attention to the lack of transparency regarding the initial vote on the IGA, both within the two parties and on a broader scale. The secrecy is shown by the fact that school board members were led to believe that they must approve the IGA before the end of the 2018 calendar year, and that failure to do so would result in the termination of the existing services that SROs provide to PPS. It has since been indicated that this was not the case. With the knowledge that both PPS and the Police Bureau have historically struggled with transparency, I find it disturbing that board members were misled in a matter of such importance. I would also like to draw attention to the lack of communication with students prior to the vote. Although there were five student engagement sessions regarding the agreement, they were all barely publicized. A number of these sessions occurred during the day, which meant that students would have to sacrifice less than time to attend. Additionally, these meetings only took place at four of the nine PPS high schools. The combination of these factors made the sessions inaccessible to the majority of students, of the students that they were designed for. Even now, many students at Franklin and across PPS are unaware of what an SRO is and what their duties entail. It is unreasonable to expect students to express their opinions on an agreement that they do not fully understand or even know of. Finally, I would like to call out the PPS board and the Police Bureau's failure to take marginalized voices into account. There is a deeply rooted distrust between the police and marginalized groups, especially people of color, a distrust perpetuated by a history of profiling and abuses. Data from the ACLU highlights this, showing that Black students are more than twice as likely than white students to be referred to law enforcement, with many of these referrals being the result of subjective and mild behaviors such as disrespect. Although Selection, although Section 6G of the IGA briefly addresses the disproportional presence of minorities in the criminal justice system, it proposes no definitive solution or method of accountability. In the context of a recent audit, which showed a notable discrepancy in PPS between the academic achievements of people of color and their white peers, this is especially troubling. With no true way to prove that SRO presence is equitable or effective, I believe that the IGA should not be enacted. I urge the PPS board to vote in favor of the resolution to suspend the IGA. Additionally, I call on the PPS board to schedule student engagement sessions at each of the nine high schools. These meetings should be at a time that makes them accessible to the majority of staff and the student body, and promoted so that students are aware of the sessions and are encouraged to attend. The board should also recognize that a number of students are uncomfortable around armed officers and work to create a space for an open dialogue with students where the police officers are not in attendance. We, as students and teachers, are largely affected by the IGA, and it only makes sense for our voices to be heard in a place where we can feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, moving on, all right.
So my name's Ben Snead. I'm from Grant High School. That's S-N-E-A-D. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this discussion, and I look forward to being a part of the conversation. And hopefully you guys can bear with me, this is the first time I've done something like this.
You're doing great.
Yeah, appreciate it. So after hearing so many frightening news stories related to school safety, I think it's a good thing the district is considering having school resource officers in our school to ensure the safety of all students in the classroom. It's always good to see Portland leading the way in making sure every student can learn in an environment that is physically safe and protected. I've also recently seen many saddening incidents of police-citizen interactions turned violent in the news, and I'm sure a lot of other people have heard about this. Having a trustworthy relationship between police officers and the community is a critical aspect of ensuring that we have a safe city. So a good way of solving this problem is to make sure that our young people have positive interactions with police officers, who are especially trained to work with youth, which I believe is what SROs have that training. Research suggests that if SRO programs are implemented correctly, they can lead to reduce crime, and there is research to prove that officers do make schools safer places. Many educators also say that if SROs aren't involved in school disciplinary actions, which I believe this proposal includes, they can be quite successful. I also want to say, I heard it said earlier, there was a consensus among students, and I would disagree with that. I don't think, I think, to me, the word consensus means that there's a 100% general agreement. I think I might have a lot of disagreements with some other students. I just wanted to point out that that's not necessarily correct. And I would just say that just because some people have the louder voices doesn't mean they're the only ones with opinions. So I would discourage the idea of suspending this policy, and I would, just because there is a little bit of controversy, and I would ask, I hope you guys would correct me if I'm wrong in this, but was it less than two months ago, it was, you guys voted for one to advance this? Is that correct? I don't understand how, just because there is some controversy around it, we're on the cusp of totally changing our position on that. That doesn't make very much sense to me. And I would hope that public officials would be stronger in their convictions about what needs to happen. And so that frustrates me a little bit. So thank you guys so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nora Burkharts Meyer and Breely Batida Aquino.
I'd like to request to do my presentation with a partner of mine, that we co-wrote this speech together, and we will maintain the three-minute time slot. We've timed it out together, but we'd like to present it together, if that's okay? Okay, thank you. Okay. We will share the microphone.
Does it reach?
Um, we can kind of tilt it. That'll be fine.
I can sit over here, that's easier.
Oh, either way works.
Whatever works.
My name is Nora Burkharts Meyer. That's B-U-R-K-H-A-R-T-S-M-E-I-E-R.
My name is Lily Rayor, R-A-Y-O-R. So we are both members of the Cleveland Alliance for Racial Equity Leadership Class. We appreciate the opportunity to speak on this resolution. We specifically want to thank Brem Edwards for inviting us here and extending the invitation to students.
Before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge that this resolution was brought to our attention on Sunday evening. However, there was no communication to the greater student body regarding the resolution. We hope that a widespread effort will be made moving forward to connect with students and their families to be involved in these discussions. We understand the potential benefits of SROs, but we want to ensure that they're implemented in an equitable and deliberate way. In order for the impact of SROs to be positive, we believe more time is needed to consider the role they play in schools and in the greater community, and whether the benefits of their presence outweigh the $1.2 million that their employment would cost annually.
On their website, the National Organization of Student Resource Officers outlines a triad concept for SROs. Basically, in it, they define three main roles of SROs as an educator, an informal counselor, and mentor, and lastly, as a law enforcement officer.
This was their purpose when they were first implemented in Flint, Michigan during the 1950s to foster relationships between local police and youth. However-
However, a dramatic change in policy occurred in the 1990s when the Department of Justice funded the implementation of law enforcement as a part of the tough-on-crime initiative. Because of this change, SRO programs across the country became microcosms of a larger surge in police brutality and contributed to the school-to-prison pipeline.
We believe that PPS can and should be a leader in reclaiming the original purpose of student resource officers, to be educators and role models first. During our time as high school students, we have never seen these roles being fulfilled by student resource officers. Our resource officers have never introduced themselves, we don't know their names, through a Google search, we couldn't find them out, so to us, they are strangers.
For SROs to have a positive influence on the community, they serve interpersonal relationships built on a foundation of trust should exist. Without these relationships, fully armed officers in schools can become imposing figures of authority that perpetuate a climate of fear and their power can be misused for disciplinary purposes.
We are concerned about the high cost of SROs considering the limited budget of our district. Pre-existing concerns in the PPS community such as overcrowding, lack of funding for equity-based training, and the budget deficit for school renovation should be weighed equally, if not prioritized over the need for law enforcement. The district hasn't funded SROs for the past 20 years. Adding this considerable expense will undoubtedly impact funding for important resources.
We ask that the school board extend the amount of time dedicated to discussing this issue considering the gravity of the impact law enforcement can have on the experience of students of all ages and backgrounds. We want this decision to be given the attention and deliberation it deserves.
Thank you again for this opportunity and I wanted to say, I know it's really hard to get up here and speak, so thank you to all the other students who came to speak today.
Yes, you're all doing a wonderful job. Thank you so much for your courage.
Hi, my name is Breely Buttita, B-R-E-E-L-Y, last name B-U-T-T-I-T-T-A, and I'm going to be presenting a collaborative piece that was made by myself and my fellow seniors, Toshia and Gabe, to represent Roosevelt High School. To start with, we just want to ask, is this really the best way the school board could be spending its money? At Roosevelt, we have four counselors for the entire student body. Students need support, not armed police patrolling the halls like a war zone. So many of the situations that would need to be diffused by SROs could just as easily be prevented by providing adequate mental and emotional support to students. Besides this, it needs to be said that if students come out wholeheartedly against a proposal, it is your duty to hear us out and to take our voices into consideration when you make decisions that affect us students more than any other group. If you don't, you are knowingly and willingly betraying the needs and students you claim to stand for. Another question we find ourselves asking is how are SROs different than cops? Honestly, there seem to be more similarities than there are differences. If both are allowed to use deadly force and carry lethal weapons, how does that make our school community feel safer? To be direct to the point, we as students feel poses more of a threat in our school than anything else. How is putting more guns in a school supposed to make us feel safe when guns are the root of the problem? Knowing that a lethal weapon could be drawn on us at any moment in the one place where we're supposed to feel protected does nothing but make a more stressful and anxious school environment resulting in a worsened student body. When an armed man hopped the fence onto my middle school campus in sixth grade, our armed SRO didn't even make it to him before he had run through our campus, exiting to the street, and began to fire shots. My point being, that if an armed SRO can't even stop a shooter, what's even the purpose of having them? When their one duty goes from protect and serve to comply or die, what are we to do? If cops and SROs allow white men like Dylan Roof and Nick Cruz to shoot up an entire body of people and come out alive, but shoot and kill innocent black youth like Mike Brown and Tamir Rice, who is there to say that this isn't a school shooter issue but more of a tactic to control black and brown youth in one of the nation's whitest cities? Black and Latinx students are suspended from schools at disproportionate rates. When police with the authority to file the juvenile equivalent of criminal charges, hiring more cops bring plenty unintended consequences, including higher rates of suspensions, expulsions, and arrests that funnel black and brown students into the criminal justice system. Cops in schools lead to students being criminalized for behavior that should be handled inside the school. Students of color are especially vulnerable to push our trends in discriminatory application of discipline. Guns were created to kill and created to be a threat. No matter whose hands they end up with, they always pose as a technique of lethal intimidation to control those around them. We believe that students should be educated, not incarcerated. We need to work together to disrupt the cycle of the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Camila Arz and John Richardson.
All right, Camila Arz. As they make their way up, I want to mention to the audience that we invited a representative from every high school to speak tonight, so. Thank you. Okay, ready?
Camila Arz Torres Goitia, A-R-Z-E space T-O-R-R-E-S space G-O-I-T-I-A. I'm a teacher at Madison High School and tonight I take issue with three things: the lack of genuine attempts for student input on the IGA, the idea that armed police officers could practice restorative justice, and the presumption that police officers make students feel more safe and secure. The Jefferson students who spoke last month put it best when they said that they were able to get more community input in 24 hours than the board was able to in two months. I am grateful for the board's decision to recognize this and to reopen the IGA for discussion, but that issue will not be resolved in a 25-minute segment tonight or a few after-school meetings. It will be solved when you come to our schools and genuinely listen without pushing an agenda. Go and meet with every student, not the model students that administrators put in front of you on tours or AP and CTE classroom visits, but the students in the hallway who have been pushed out of their classes for the third time that week. The students who commune in hidden stairwells or have standing meetings with attendant specialists or mental health counselors stretched thin from heavy caseloads. The students who started with us their freshman year and transferred to alternative placements or moved due to gentrification of our neighborhood. The students who have jobs and outside-of-school responsibilities that keep them from attending last-minute after-school meetings or board votes almost an hour max right away or Saturday visioning sessions. If you were to listen to those students, you might understand their doubts about police officers. You might hear from students whose fathers, brothers, sisters, cousins have had negative interactions with the police. Students who I have seen stopped and frisked without probable cause in our collie neighborhood despite Portland's laws against racial profiling. You might hear from immigrant students wary to interact with officers due to language barriers or their documentation status. You might hear a student recalling an incident that occurred two years ago when SROs came to Madison's forensic science classes and were asked about police brutality. Their answers were traumatizing. When students invited those officers back for an RJ circle, they broke protocol by interrupting the facilitator and other students several times. Nowhere in the $5 million fiscal breakdown for the IGA do I see RJ training for officers. This may be one reason why the idea that SROs understand restorative justice practices sounds improbable to us. I have taught government and economics for five years at Madison and I have never seen students more engaged in class than I have during our circle discussion about the IGA. One student asked the group, "What would make you feel safer in schools?" I heard a wide range of answers: make a greater effort to recruit teachers of color, bring back our beloved restorative justice coordinator, more mental health counselors, for administrators to be trained in restorative justice and how to handle sexual harassment. Not one of them said an armed police officer would make them feel safe and secure. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Frank Santos. Frank Santos? Thank you all. The board will now vote on Resolution 5807. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. On the phone?
Yes.
Thank you. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5807 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student Representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Okay, next, we're going to have more discussion on our visioning process, which we're excited to hear more about. So Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, students.
By the way, all of you that were nervous about being here, you were amazing.
Well, back up to the stage here, we have Jonathan Garcia, who's going to give us a little bit of a status check on how things are coming along with our community visioning sessions. So just to give everyone a little bit of a sense of some of the themes that are emerging in these group dialogues.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So first of all, thank you to the Board of Education for your leadership and your commitment to being in community as we journeyed up and down Portland, participating in community meetings with PPS staff, students, and families. I want to share a quick update to the board. It's a preliminary status update on the inputs we've received from Guiding Coalition and the community meetings. And I want to, I just want to emphasize and acknowledge that this is preliminary, preliminary data, preliminary update that is happening in real time and is an iterative process. So what you see tonight might look a little different tomorrow and the next day. And so again, it's an iterative process, it's happening in real time, and I'll get to the reasons why. So just to give you kind of a sense of what to expect in this presentation, we're going to be having a quick conversation about the, just a quick recap on where we are in the process, overview of all the inputs, some preliminary idea, oh, I guess I'm responsible for that too, sorry. Preliminary idea of families from Guiding Coalition 1 and some of the early community meetings that we've had, identify next steps and give you a preview of what to expect this Friday and Saturday during our Guiding Coalition Number Two. At this point, you might be familiar with this roadmap that we've been sharing with our community to give folks real-time progress on where we are in this visioning process. So to recap, we started this whole process off with a student summit that was hosted by students across the district. That led to our Guiding Coalition 1 in early December. That was followed by community sessions over the last few weeks. And right now, again, we're getting ready for Guiding Coalition Number Two. And then the rest of the process is outlined here in this roadmap. Again, this is a public document that you can find online and we've been sharing with our broader community. So what were the inputs that we've seen thus far? So here's some stats, just to give you a sense of the work that we've done to date. So between Guiding Coalition 1 and 2, we've, we hosted 26 community meetings at which about 1,100 people gave in-person input. We also had an online survey which generated a little bit over 600 completed responses. About 1,700 folks opened their survey. We, based on the data, we can see that about, again, a little bit over 600 completed the survey.
Is that closed now?
It is closed, yes. As part of our efforts with this visioning process, we have, we conducted three learning journeys, one virtual learning journey which is covering what we're calling 70 quote-unquote sites. So that, again, will be available online for the public to consume and really take notice of some of the learning journeys, again, that we're providing our Guiding Coalition members. And then we just completed two physical learning journeys covering nine sites across Seattle and the Bay Area. I was, you know, and again, you'll hear a lot more during Guiding Coalition 1 about some of the learnings there. So as we get into the next session of this update, we wanted to share with you some emerging ideas and themes that we have begun to find. Again, and I will say it again just for emphasis, we know that these are emerging ideas which will continue to evolve in real time and shift as more data is included in the analysis. So with, you know, 1,100 in-person inputs and 625 completed surveys, you can imagine that is a lot of post-its, a lot of data that we are, again, aggressively analyzing in real time. And so we want to give you a flavor of how our team is approaching the analysis of all the inputs that have been generated. We are focusing on capturing the broader essence of an emerging theme and sharing with you a first, a few persistent representative ideas that speak to that theme. And so as part of this process, we are taking a constructivist approach to the work. We're identifying emerging theme areas by grouping individuals' inputs into affinity groups, and these includes ideas that are persistent as well as innovative. And so what you see here are some examples of emerging ideas that are being generated from the initial inputs we have analyzed. We know that all of our emerging ideas will continue to evolve, but we wanted to share with you a sample size of some of what is being captured. And so, again, I won't read these out loud, but you can see some emerging ideas being And so what you'll see in the next few slides are, again, examples of some emerging themes that will continue to evolve as more data is incorporated. The inner circle represents the emerging idea, the emerging theme, with the outer circles representing samples of the data that we are looking at. Some of these topics in the outer circles are the synthesis of multiple ideas being generated and some serve as individual ideas. So in short, we're providing you with examples of where these emerging themes are coming So the first, you know, the first emerging idea was an equitable aligned system and structures to disrupt institutional inequitable practices. Equity-centered inclusive learning for students and adults. Mindful special educational practice that supports students and educators. That's a great question. I actually don't know, but maybe someone that's an academic.
These are, we're going to keep working on the acronyms, but the, these are tools that we can use to assess and rubric schools' capacities to implement a set of practices, particularly for school improvement, for student behavior, for climate, for, so it's just a framework that is used by many of our schools.
And again, I want to emphasize the outer circles are actual post-its or data points that capture the essence of the center theme. So here's a few more. So readiness to learn, developing critical talent to best our families, redefining time and place for personalizing pathways to learning, life skills, global orientation and preparedness, broadening the educational experience to prepare the whole child, physical environments that reimagine spaces and places for community. So again, these are just general themes that are being generated and I don't want to go into them too specifically because these are still evolving and these are emerging.
So you clicked through those slides pretty quick. I'm wondering, are those going to be, are those posted online somewhere?
The PowerPoint is online on the Board of Education agenda.
I think each one of those slides would be a great click-down.
Yeah, and so again, I don't want to get into the weeds of it today because, again, that will continue to evolve, but this, this presentation is online. So wanted to share a couple of next steps on, again, what are we doing with this data? So we will continue to integrate and analyze all that data from the community meetings and the survey, again, over 1,100 in-person inputs and over 600 surveys. So we'll continue to integrate and analyze in real time. The themes identified in this update represent early ideas and may shift as we continue to analyze the data. And the Guiding Coalition members will have a chance to refine and work with these ideas as part of the Guiding Coalition Number Two this week at Franklin High School. And so as we, as we think about the next round of community sessions, you know, we, our goal is to begin posting those dates by end of this week. This will include two PPS community-wide sessions in North Portland and on the west side of Portland as well. We will reengage similar stakeholders that we'd identified in Community Sessions 1 and we will continue to refine our outreach strategies to bring more communities into the conversation about the district's vision. These community sessions for the second round will provide feedback to the priority areas identified within emerging theme areas. We are designing these as community sessions now and will seek input from the Board of Education to ensure that they, they are thoughtful and considerate of all of our communities. And so the last item that I wanted to quickly share is a quick preview of Guiding Coalition 2, which again is taking place this Friday and Saturday at Franklin High School. Two, which again is taking place this Friday and Saturday at Franklin High School. So on Friday evening, we're going to be looking back and reflecting on everything that's transpired since Guiding Coalition One, including the learning journeys, community sessions, and survey results. On Saturday, we'll be focusing on two main areas. One is people in the mornings, so really diving into the graduate portrait and the adult portrait. Again, if we think about, we've been asking the community to think about, you know, what are the skills, mindsets, and knowledge that all of our students should have by the time they leave our school system? So if that's what we're looking to, to, to create, what are the, what is the characteristics of adults, whether they're teachers, whether they're staff, whether they're family members, the entire community? What are the characteristics that we should all hold true to make the graduate profile a reality? And then the afternoon, we'll be focusing on the system implications. So how might, how might our school system need to change in order to support students and the adults that support our students? So that, that gives you, again, a quick rundown and a quick update of where we are with our visioning process. Open to questions, or I know you all had a chance to visit a couple of community meetings, if not more than a couple. So any, any feedback or any thoughts that you had as we went through that process?
Well, first, I wanted to say thanks. You've, I mean, there were enormous number of affinity group meetings last weekend. I was at several of them, and you guys did a great job. I was really, I was really impressed with the turnout on Saturday at the community meeting. I had a question about the data in terms of affinity groups. Will you be looking at the data in a disaggregated way?
And by that, you mean?
Well, like, will you, this is, you're compiling these, these specific ideas, but it's been collected through affinity groups. Are you separating it out at some point with the affinity?
Definitely.
And one other thing, are you also looking at, because you're grouping answers, are you looking at the volume of certain answers too? That you're getting more responses?
Yeah, so to your first question, we are definitely, we're going to be very intentional about, you know, knowing where that data came from. So in the case of special education, which we hosted two meetings, we'll know that the data came specifically from there, whether, you know, and so the list goes on. So we're definitely capturing that in our data collection, and we will analyze, because part of the visioning process will also incorporate specific subgroups of areas that we want to focus on, like special education, like our African-American students, et cetera. So we want to make sure to capture that, that data effectively. And then, remind me your second question.
I was just wondering if you look at a, a number, like if you have a comment that students should be more resilient, do you, do you catalog, like that you got 100 responses on that, or are they just grouped together generally?
I don't think we're, we're looking at it from a, you know, how many times did we see something populate, other than to say that that is a prominent idea, a prominent theme that we want to unpack more as we, again, develop these themes through that data.
Okay, thank you.
Just, okay, just a quick question. So I know you, the vision, visioning has visited some, like, school leadership classes. Are there any, are all, like, maybe high schools being visited, or is there any more student meetings at the schools?
Sure. So as it relates to Community Session One process, we are pretty much done. Again, that, our last one was Sunday, Sunday morning. For Guiding Coalition Number Two, I think we're definitely wanting to ensure that we, we touch every high school. We definitely went into the middle schools and some elementary schools as well by affinity groups. And again, we're, we're thinking creatively about how to target student groups, student organizations like the BSUs, the Mechas, et cetera, the ASBs. And so definitely would consider, you know, you as a thought partner in ensuring that we have a robust and a comprehensive approach to, to getting as much student voice into this conversation as possible.
Cool, okay, thanks.
So do we have essentially a mailing list of everybody who's attended a session outside of the open house that we can correct for next?
Sure, definitely. So as we approach the, some of the smaller focus group meetings, our, our leadership took the initiative of reaching out. So all of our sped parents that attended our session, we have a check-in, a sign-in sheet that will continue to, to provide more information around these community sessions. Again, we want to ensure that even though they didn't participate in the first round of community meetings, that folks are welcome to, to participate in, in conversation moving forward.
So if you haven't already, to, I think you've sent out thank you notes, for example, for participating, but here, here's what we heard from your group, and here's, here's the emerging picture, and, and we need to, to de-educationally ease it.
Yeah.
But to, hey, we heard you, let us know if we missed something, and here's what we're hearing from the broader community would be a good first feedback step.
Definitely.
That we'll need to, I think, repeat a couple of times in this process, that we want to make sure people know they were heard and that we heard them accurately.
Definitely. And so part of the process for Community Session Two is, again, taking a look at the comprehensive data from all of our community engagement sessions from, number one. But then obviously, when we go back to our special education committee, a community, we want to bring the data that we, we got from their first round as part of the, the work in, in those community sessions.
I do, go ahead. I haven't been able to make a lot of the sessions, my work schedule and all, so if I wanted to see specific groups and the data from those groups, are those available to us?
Yeah, again, as soon as we're able to, we will provide all of that data, the raw data, to the Board of Education and to the general public, as long, as well as these emerging themes that keep being refined.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say, I, I really have felt in several of these sessions, people have expressed a sense of appreciation about being asked, and my feeling is that people have felt that it's been an authentic process. So it's really on us to, as we move into the phases of the distillation of the information that's come forward, and what are we going to do with it? We really need to make sure we do a good job of communicating back to people, this is what we heard, thank you so much, this is where we're going, because that's just the worry that people have. They say this seems authentic, this seems constructive, this seems like it can make it, really make a difference for our district, but the proof will be in the pudding. So I, I'm sure we will follow through with good communication, but I've heard that pretty much at every session, that people are hopeful.
Definitely, and we've been working with our communications team very intentionally about, again, making sure that communication is, is an ongoing process. And I think to your point, folks have, have also expressed to me the, the gratitude to, to be part of this process. We were very intentional of targeting specific communities that have historically not been asked to, to be part of a conversation. If I, if I may, you know, the one that stands out to me was our conversation with Head Start families. We had about 20 Head Start families, very diverse in, by race, by, by language, et cetera, et cetera. And the mere fact that someone from the central office, or a few folks from central office had a chance to, to talk to them, they were beyond, you know, grateful and are really encouraged by the work, and, and actually, some work has already just been generated even from that conversation. So what we're telling folks as we're going to these community meetings, as we're looking at the data, if there are areas in which we know we can implement with very, with fidelity very early on, we will do that. So as an example, we met with students from our community transition program. There was about 30 or 35 students, and one, one thing was loud, loud and clear, that they want to be at the epicenter of, of helping us make decisions, you know, as students in our, in our organization. And so we, we've taken that back, we've been having conversations with the superintendent about what that looks like as part of either the Student Advisory Council or other forms of, of work. So again, we're taking that data in real time and really making changes as, as we see as we can.
You know, I wonder if, in, about having some kind of engagement strategy for, even though we have deans and people from our, our higher ed, but with faculty from higher ed, if we had a group that, from some of our partners there, that could really talk about how we, I mean, visioning with us would certainly help to create, I think, better partnerships and more alignment.
Yeah.
So that might be another group to, and all the other groups that you're doing, you know, another constellation to consider.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely welcome.
Perhaps we can enlist Vice Chair Sparsa Brown to help us with all the higher.
I would be glad to.
Careful what you request.
Yeah, definitely.
Really use your fridge.
Definitely welcome other input in terms of groups or, or specific communities that we definitely want to, to, to be in touch with.
Great, thank you.
So just want to encourage members of the public, we'll have a new round of sessions announced.
We'll begin to announce, announce those on our PPS website by end of week. These sessions will take place beginning late February into early March. Again, we want to give folks plenty of time to, to plan accordingly.
And so for those of you who haven't been part of it, the exercises that we have people go through involve writing comments on little sticky Post-its, and then we take pictures of those and catalog them. How many of those Post-its do we have now?
You can imagine that on average, folks are giving 10 ideas per, per exercise, and there's 1,100.
Thousands.
Folks that participate in.
And, and those are catalogued by what, which session they came from.
Exactly.
So that will allow that kind of.
So our team has been aggressively inputting all that data into an Excel sheet.
Which explains why these conclusions are very much emerging, because we're still trying to catch up with what happens out there.
I heard that 3M stock is trending because of the PPS usage. I, I want to just join other board members in thanking the staff for all the work they've done. It seems like whenever I call Roseanne, she's always running off to some, to getting ready to host a meeting, and I know that there's been lots of weekend meetings, and this, this weekend, this last weekend, there was a meeting where there were lots of staff there, and, you know, I think this is an indication of PPS trying to meet our community when it works for them and giving them lots of different opportunities. If you can't make it on Monday, there's something on Tuesday. If there's not, if you can't make it on Tuesday, there's something on Wednesday. So I just want to really acknowledge that the amount of time that's been spent, whether it's, you know, for a really small group or a big group, I think it's been a really important signal to the community. So I want to thank people for that. Also, I don't think I've been to one event that Director Bailey's not there as well, so I just want to thank you for your service on the core team and really sort of repping for us almost at every meeting, except for when there's conflict, so thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work. And I just want to let you and everybody know, it reminds you that I will not be at the visioning session this week, even though I would love to be there. Unfortunately, it's my annual convention that's been scheduled, you know, five years in advance, and I will be going to the balmy Midwest where it is below 3 last time I looked, so believe me, I'd much rather be here.
We will miss you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That was really exciting. Okay, so next we have quarterly reports. The board will receive two quarterly reports tonight. Wow, look at the audience now. Okay, the first one on the Whitehurst implementation plan and the other financial report, two really important reports. What happened to our audience? Well, thank you for being here.
You know who truly cares, right? Because we're small.
Really, small but mighty. All right, Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to?
Well, the team is gathering, so Chief of Staff Stephanie Soden will lead the team here on giving an important quarterly update.
Yes.
On many of our student safety-related work. Thank you.
Good evening, Stephanie Soden, Chief of Staff. I'm here today with some colleagues to present the third quarterly report on the Whitehurst recommendation implementations. There were, as you recall, there are 16 recommendations that were in the report you received last May. We added a 17th, which is to hire our Title IX director, so that's why there are 17 listed, but it mentioned 16. And as you go through the table, as previous reports, you'll see where we've updated it. And we have made a lot of really good progress. I'm going to turn it over to my amazing teammates, who are going to give you an update on trainings that we've been doing, legislation, and hiring and recruiting. So I'll pass it on.
I'm Mary Kane, Senior Legal Counsel. We have provided you a training matrix. I hope you have a chance to look at it. As you're aware, we've been rolling out two new training modules, the Sexual Incidents Response Committee and the Adult Sexual Misconduct Response. We started in August of this last year, and with the assistance of our expert, Dr. Wilson Kenny, and our Title IX Coordinator, Elisa Shore, we've been making great progress in providing comprehensive training across the district. Our focus initially was on training those staff members we believe needed to be the designated resources at the building level, and who would eventually be the ones training the rest of the staff. So each building has a designated school compliance officer who has received the full training and who is now tasked with shepherding these processes within their buildings. The ASMR training has been very successful. The CIRC training has been largely successful at the elementary and middle school levels. But the particular complexities at the high school level have, have caused us recently to meet with our high school administrators to get feedback on how we can modulate the process to better meet the needs of that student population. In January, at the beginning of the year, we uploaded the Title IX webpage, which offers information to students, parents, staff. It contains, for example, an information page about CIRC to help parents understand what the process is and how it, we're trying to support students who become involved in CIRC. It also has available supports for the, that are in the community and within the school district. We have also created an online training for parents and volunteers, which can be found on the volunteer website. We're working on developing a method to provide online confirmation that volunteers have viewed this training. It's mandatory for them, but, but for now, we are asking them to confirm in writing on the volunteer application that they submit to the security staff. We just recently, as of this week, paused our training to allow for the onboarding of our new CIRC facilitator, which I'm very excited about. So I'm going to let Brenda speak to that.
Good evening. We have just recently hired our CIRC coordinator. This person will start on Monday, and so what we have done is we have paused the trainings for a couple of weeks in order for this person to receive training from Wilson Kenny, as well as get updated on the process and the plan moving forward. This person will fall within the Student Success and Health Department. It will report currently to James Loveland, who's the Director of Student Success and Health, and as soon as we have a Title IX director hired, that person will report to the Title IX director. The reason we have chosen to put it under Student Success and Health is because we have the current Student Threat Assessment process, and within Salem Kaiser and a number of other school districts in the state and in the country, they, they put both of those under one department, and then they really work collaboratively together. So we, we are going to move forward with that specific plan.
May I ask a quick question, Mary? What were you alluding to regarding the challenges with the CIRC training in the high schools?
I think there are some complexities in the types of, both in the types of complaints we get, the, the sources of information, how, how we investigate, when sometimes, I think you're aware of some instances where it's, it's, somebody's not coming forward, either a friend is coming forward, or we get some anonymous tip, and trying to, trying to move forward in that way. There are other instances where we have some students who have, for personal or family There are other instances where we have some students who have, for personal or family reasons, don't want us to move forward immediately, you know, and so it's working with them to make, to make sure that it's safe for them as well. So there are a lot of kind of permutations that we are working through to try to help make it a, as I said, a more modulated system for the, for the high school cohort.
Okay.
Okay, on legislation, on the report that you all had, from Stephanie, it details what, I think it's number 13 on, on the sheet. It details what's currently happening at the legislative level, so it's week two in Salem. We're making a lot of progress on this, actually. We're in good shape so far. I feel, feel good about it. So the, we, our bill, Senate Bill 156, is one vehicle, and then Senate Bill 155, which is the committee's, Senator Roblin's bill, which has now become Senator Rob Wagner's bill, because he's now the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, and this is moving first on the Senate side. That bill is going to be the vehicle for one giant party on employee misconduct. It's not a party, but that's my phrase for, we're all coming together, and we've had some really, really good discussions, and I think we're in a place where everybody's on the same page, which is a good thing. So we're going to have a hearing next Monday, the 4th. Superintendent Guerrero and Chair Moore will be there to testify about kind of the history of the Whitehurst report, the recommendations, the need for these changes. You'll recall that the report specifically called out two things that needed a legislative fix. One is the definition of misconduct and the tightened timelines that TSPC investigations take, the time that it takes to fully investigate. So those two pieces are included in this one kind of omnibus bill that we're all discussing right now. Our colleagues at OSEA and OEA had some concerns around the definition that was initially thrown out, which was going to make it easier to substantiate claims of sexual conduct. We offered them, I'm pretending it's compromise language, but it's not, it's actually what the recommendations asked of us, which is to align with the TSPC regulation. That language was agreed upon, so that will be in the amendment that's coming, and, and I have that here in front of me that I can hand out. Sorry, I didn't do that beforehand. And so that was a sticking point early on. I didn't, I was not sure if we'd get there, but I think we're there. The other piece that's changed in the last couple of days, originally the sort of omnibus big bill was going to include a central registry for all complaints to go through TSPC. It looks like that may not be happening, and part of that is that the TSPC Director is maybe not going to be there a lot, very long, he's looking. So I think there's concern from the legislature that they don't want to put this on that agency when they may be going through another transition. So that conversation is still happening. The piece that, and I, I don't think I dropped any bombs there, it's been a little bit public, but the, 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 the problem is that it's a lot of work, and it costs a lot of money. And so no, whether or not there's interest in the fiscal side of it is still up in the air. So that part is still moving, but the definition is in a good spot, the timelines are in a good spot, and then we're also doing some other cleanup around what students were talking about, because before we were talking about K-12 in statute, but we want to make sure that we have early learners and our transition students included. The other piece that we're going to add is a requirement to complete an investigation so that you can't just resign, but that that investigation would continue, and that, folks seemed in agreement with that, too. So all that to say, we have a hearing next week. Public hearings is just the first step, then they do a work session, and then it has to move to the next step, which would, I think, right now, it might go to Student Success. It's unclear if that's going to happen or if it'll go to the House side first. So that's where things are at the moment. And, and I should backtrack. There's, no changes are being, there's nothing happening at TSPC yet. There's just conversation of, of public, it was made public that, that he is a finalist for another job. So that's why I'm, I'm just, I didn't want you to think that I was sharing news that wasn't mine to share. There isn't any news yet.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, board members?
Lots of good progress.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so I just call out that the board went through, I think everybody went through the CIRC training or the Sexual Incident Response Committee training, and it was really informative, and I think if, if I just look at this training schedule, if we've, are just building that out across the system, I think that's going to be really important because we'll have lots of people who have a lot more awareness, and I think it just builds overall system capacity. So thanks for giving the board the opportunity to go through that. Just a question I have generally about the, the training, you talked about the volunteers that we're still working out, a system in which to actually be able to verify it.
Right.
For the staff, when they go through, it looks like there's a 30-minute training. Is there some sort of, once they move through it, some sort of independent, whoops, sorry, independent way that we, we, the district, know that they've completed it? Or is it a self-report as well?
The volunteers.
No, I'm sorry. It sounds like the volunteers, we still are working on it, solve for something besides a self-report. I'm asking about the, the 30-minute training for the staff.
For, so most.
The online training that staff's going through, did they?
Well, we.
Oh, we have through Pepper.
Right. So by October 31st, all PPS employees had to go through a series of online trainings. That was one of them. I don't know what happens to you if you don't go through it, because I went through it. So I'm assuming we have a mechanism in place and through HR perhaps.
That's just from a sustainability standpoint, it'd be great to know that we have some way of catching that, or confirming independently.
We do. So, so for any staff that have not, oh, gone through, then an email goes to their supervisor, and then it's the responsibility of the supervisor to ensure that those things happen. And then within the Pepper PD, you log in with your ID, so then you take attendance, and so we know which employees have taken it and which ones have not.
And what sort of rate are we at in terms of compliance?
That I would have to ask HR.
I do not know.
We can look into it, though.
Yeah.
Your superintendent proudly printed out his certificates of completion for every one of the modules.
That's what I was wondering, if there were certificates that volunteers would have to show as part of their proof of.
We've brought in IT to, to help us, as I said, it's, it's something that they're working on, and I think eventually we will be able to get an online completion certification. It's just because they don't have a PPS.
Right.
We log in with our PPS email, and so we just have to find a different mechanism. But they, the IT staff has been great, that we've been working on it with them, and I think they're close to developing something for us.
Great.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, moving on. Thank you so much. Great. And Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce the next item, the financial report?
Yes, Cynthia Lay, our Chief Financial Officer, who's settling in here with her third quarter.
Good evening. My seventh week here at PPS. Madam Chair, Member of the Board, Superintendent, I would like to present to you the latest and greatest in my shop. It is the second quarter of fiscal year 2018-19. So as you see in your package, there will be six topics that I will be going through tonight, very quickly, so it's painless. A comparison report for the current fiscal year 18-19, that will give you the budget to actuals, and also the projected ending fund balance for this year. Two, a high-level projection for 2019-20, that will include the projected ending fund balance. Three, the two enrollment reports that provide the comparison by grade and by school. Four, the quarterly investment report, providing insight into our cash on hand and investment holdings. Five, the purse rate stabilization fund multi-year revenue review. And six is the quarterly real estate report, providing a listing of all leases, and the appendix, one showing the comparison for the financial report at the same time this year in comparison to last year. And, and last is the listing of the real estate investment information, listing by category. Moving along to the general fund quarterly summary, comparing the second quarter of 2018-19 fiscal year to the last year at the same quarter, the revenue collections are basically flat, with the year-to-date revenue of $8.3 million, higher this year than last. The expenditures are trending to budget, but higher than the quarter last year, and that is due to the escalating increase in pay and employee count and the higher contracted services. Analyzing the 2018-19, we expected the year slightly better than fiscal year 18-19 when we budgeted. The revenue is expected to be approximately $2.2 million higher, and the spending is forecasting to be $3.2 million under budget. So the net savings of this is really based on the vacancy savings in salaries and benefits, and so the net expected result will be about an increase of $5.3 million to the ending fund balance, resulting in the projected about 4.6% of expenditures to date. And again, this is as of December 31st, 2018. The actual enrollment for, as of October 1 is slightly higher than last year of 24 students, but actually is 385 students below the enrollment projection when we did the budget for 2018-19. In May of this year, in 2019, the ODE will give us the, the State School Fund reconciliation for fiscal year 2017-18, and at that time, I will come back to the board to give the board an updated weighted student count and the impact of that student count. As of December 31st, our operating cash and investment portfolio total $874.8 million in book value. Cash and cash equivalent balances were $170.8 million, with a $22.8 million of this amount is a purse restrictive account. And again, this is the purse stabilization account we're talking about. So looking at the first report, 2018-19 budget to actuals, you will see that the year-to-date activities compared to the adopted budget is presented in the table that you have in front of you. And do you have the table in front of you, the report? That is page four of the package.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page. And next time, I will have a presentation, a PowerPoint, it's easier for you all and the audience to follow. So I am on page four of the report. Thank you. Great. So.
Comes up for page four.
Great, thank you for the feedback. So in a nutshell, the forecast for this year is, is projected to have a greater ending fund balance, and we are also expected to end the year slightly better than we budgeted. The revenue is expected to again be approximately $2.2 million greater than expected, and in spending, we are forecasting to be $3.2 million to be under budget. That is a good news, because the net effect will give you about $5.3 million to be in the ending fund balance that we can carry forward into 2019-20 as the beginning fund balance. Yes, sir?
But with our enrollment less than projected.
Right.
Does that come around to bite us next year when the state does its, possibly, when the state does its reconciliation about how much money we throw at you?
Thank you very much for the, the question. Actually, I was going to go into the enrollment in a couple slides, but I'm going to answer your questions now. It's very, it's a very good question. So ODE allows a district with a decreasing in enrollment to, to have a one-year using the higher student enrollment of the two years. So in our case, 17-18 is lower, 18-19 is lower, so our budget for 19-20 is going to be based on the lower enrollment. So next year, we are going to see a decrease in state school fund based on the downturn of the enrollment. Yes.
Well, and then the same would hold true for our decrease in weighted.
Yes.
Students as well.
That is correct. Our, the most recent look at our enrollment revealed that our ELL students count has decreased, as well as our poverty count has decreased. So the weighted will have an effect on, on our funding. I, as soon as we have the information from ODE around, and I call it a May surprise, we, I will be coming back to the board with a, the impact of the decrease in the weighted enrollment.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to see what the rest of the state is going to know.
Right, yes. I can tell you at Beaverton, not that I'm always comparing us with Beaverton, but they also have a downturn in, in the poverty, and so, so if I may have your permission, I would like to move on to page, to the page with the 2019-20 financial projection. So that should be page four of your package. Okay, so this is a look at as of December, because remember, this is the second quarter financial report, and I'm using the Governor's recommended budget that was released on the November 28th, 2018, a very preliminary, we are sitting possibly, yes, it should be page five.
There's no page.
But it's between page four and page six, so.
Yeah.
And it starts with fiscal year 2019-20 financial projection. It's the page after the general fund. So it's a page after the budget to actuals for 2018-19?
After.
You got it? Great, thank you. I apologize for, I'm not sure what it looks like in your package, but there will be improvement next time for sure. You will see it on the, on the screen.
Continuous improvement in the finance department.
Yes, yes, yes. Increment improvement, thank you very much. So looking at this projection, a very early, very, very early, as of the end of December, I am expecting to see a, a negative, our expenditures may be exceeding our revenues by $14,829,000, but we are still getting new data. There will be an updated information from the state, from the Governor's office, so I just want to, the board, to hang tight for a more updated information. Moving along to the enrollment comparison report.
Chief Lay, I'm glad you clarified that. I saw everybody's eyes get a little bigger when you said we were doing well this year, but now that we're looking ahead.
Right.
We await more clear information.
Yes, and, and you're going to hear this from me, dancing this dance, from, from now on, because as numbers continue to fluctuate coming from Salem, we are really trying to gauge where it is best for the district to make our projections. In the next week or two, I'm going to be, participate with the 10K group. So this is a group of employers in the state of Oregon, representing 10,000 students enrollment or more. We will sit down, we will hash things out, and decide on how we go about crafting a budget based on the projected revenue, and I will bring you the latest information that I have. So again, on the enrollment, we have talked about it. We are, although our enrollment is not, is, is, is on a downturn trend, weighted, we're losing some weight, I am hopeful that maybe with the more. losing some weight, I am hopeful that maybe with the more revenue from the state, you know, we can maintain our level of revenue, but that is yet to be seen. So I just am asking for everybody to, to be optimistic along with me and find ways, and we are working hard to find ways to be able to, to balance the budget as we are entering into this budget season. Okay, if I have your permission, moving along to the enroll, the enrollment report is the same as last time, as of October first, so there's no changes here. The next time I present to you, there will be some, some changes to the enrollment report. Moving along to the investment report on page supposedly ten.
Page eleven.
Oh, eleven, investment report. So in summary, we are having a total of eight hundred seventy-four point eight million dollars in book value, an increase of three hundred one point eight million dollars over last quarter's report, and this increase is in line of the expectations of the property taxes that we received in November, that we, we were at the spike in November, December timeframe when it comes to property tax receivable. And the market value of this investment is eight hundred sixty-nine point eight million dollars, and, and this is really a reflection of the market as we gather the information as of December of two thousand thirty-one. Well, mind you, if, you know, if we are to, to, and to close everything, let's just say PPS, close the shop, then the market value is the, the column, but the, the district will collect the money. So it is important for me to present to you the information in three separate definition, par value, market value, and book value. Okay, it may be too much information, but I'm sure for somebody out there with a financial mind will understand. Great. Moving along to the next graph on page eleven, just a bar showing the, the percentage that we invest for PPS. Any questions so far for me?
So we could, we could close things down, get eight hundred and seventy million and split it eight ways?
We're trying to stay out of trouble, Director Bailey.
Maybe I was the instigator, I apologize. It's late in the night, and I thought you just, you know, can appreciate some humor. Fund two twenty-five, this is the PERS, the Public Employees Retirement System Rate Stabilization Fund. As of December thirty first, we have, we are expecting an ending fund balance for the year of seventeen point six million dollars by the time that we finish the year in two thousand eighteen nineteen. So on average, two hundred fifty-four dollars, thousand, two hundred fifty-four thousand per year growth is from the property tax, and the remaining one hundred thirteen thousand is from the investments. And this is based on the board policy that the board approved several years back, I believe it was in two thousand eleven maybe?
Excuse me. Will you forgive me if this information is embedded here under fund twenty-five, two twenty-five, but what is the relationship between the growth in that stabilization fund and the projected growth of our PERS obligations in the same period?
Sure. So the policy says that we are to, to move point, so to, to answer your question directly, there is no correlation between what we have here in this fund in comparison to our PERS liability account. Some years ago, the board has decided, and, and I believe when I read the board policy, it was based on the discussions with the GFOA as well as our auditors, that it is best for the district to carve out point eleven percent of the property taxes and put in this fund to save for when we really need the money to, to fund the, the rate, the, because we don't know what the PERS rate of increase is going to be. So that's part of, that, that is the reason. So, so every time I do the board presentation, I will bring this up because I believe that in the near future, we may have to move some of the money from this fund back into the general fund to, to, to put in the situation where when we, to avoid cuts.
Right. And what is our projected PERS increase for the next biennium rate?
The last time I looked at it, it was two percent increase from eighteen nineteen, and I don't have the exact rate on mine.
No, that's good, thank you.
So I'm, I'm remembering from previous presentations that the estimate was something like, if the legislature just funded us at a current service levels, we'd have about, I think, eleven million dollar deficit due to PERS, so I think that's.
I, I think I just asked that question, and the answer was more like thirty-four million or.
I, I will clarify next time. I don't have the numbers on top of me, yeah. It is large, yeah.
So I'm, I'm confused. Because I thought, yeah.
Great, great. But I know for a fact the PERS rate increase for PPS is going to be like a two percent increase in nineteen twenty in comparison to eighteen nineteen. All right, so the very last report here I have has to do with the quarterly real estate report summary, and for your interest, if you go to the very last page of the report, you should have a very long sheet of names of our entities, the, the monthly amount that we receive, and the, if you keep going, there should be a separate, do you not? Okay. I will make sure the board get that. It was on a separate, yeah, we'll make sure you have that. So on this list, you have the name of the entities that we do business with, and including the terms of the lease and the amount of the lease. I will make sure I send it over to, to Roseanne and, and, yeah. Excellent. So last but not least, you should see a table of information of when I bring reports to the board. It looks like a spreadsheet with the X. Yeah. So in the third quarter, I will be coming back with the budget to actuals, the ending fund balance forecast, the nineteen twenty projections, the investment report, and the summary of changes. And, and remember, in March, it's going to, we're going to be deep in doing budgets, so that you will be seeing more of, of me in the month of March. Do you have any questions for me?
You know, I know when we revised our investment policy to having, instead of having to pass the policy every year, we're going to substitute with quarterly reports, and I think this is much more valuable for us to have than to have a annual review of our policy.
Excellent.
So really appreciate you getting us into cycle and getting this information to us.
Excellent. I'm working really hard on making sure we have firm month-end close, quarterly-end close, so we should be able to produce reports to you frequently, and so if you have any desire for any information, please don't, do not hesitate to let me know. Thank you for your attention.
And thank you for having so much positive energy this late at night talking about this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Lee, for so ably jumping into the role and responsibility and for, I know that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with the broader team, so thank them for their quarterly report. Directors, just a classroom observation, you'll notice that Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz never even got out of her seat back there.
Distributed leadership.
Even when they opened up? Great, thank you. All right. Now, onto the business agenda. The board will now vote on the remaining items in its business agenda, already having voted on resolutions five seven nine nine, five eight zero zero, five eight zero one, five eight zero six, and five eight zero seven. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt the business agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Director Rosen moves, and Director Constam seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Thank you. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Or discussion on the business agenda?
One item I wanted to raise, because this was an issue, a contract that was carried over from a couple weeks ago, or I guess maybe from last month or last year. It is resolution, or it's the contract for the Black Parent Initiative, and one of the things that came out of the most recent state audit was a finding that the board, or finding and a recommendation that the board should be having a public discussion and reviewing in more details those contracts that have sort of a direct student nexus. And so, and this wasn't, it's a multi-year contract, correct?
That's correct.
And so we're, we're just approving this year's portion of a multi-year contract.
Yes.
And this was a contract that had a fair number of issues that came out of a, it was a governance issue and then a leadership issue at the organization, and I want to thank the staff for really stepping up and providing a lot of information to the board and responding to the board's questions about the, the contract, because I think one of the, in, in the discussion that Deputy Hertz and I had with the auditors, they, so their observation was that regardless of whether a contract was below, above or below the, the one hundred and fifty threshold, that they really recommended we give additional, the board provide additional oversight and scrutiny, and I think this is one of those cases that it was warranted, and so it's more of a thank you to staff and for community members who had questions about it, all the information, there's a Q and A, there's the quarterly reports, there's an annual reports, and I think there's a, a degree of transparency that outlines some of the issues that were raised and the steps that the organization has taken to address that, and I think that's, just based on my understanding, point to piece, the, the philosophy of how the contracts are managed, that they'll be, as they come to the board, that we'll have a lot more information. But I wanted, I don't have a question, I don't really have a question, but I just want to acknowledge that really significant amount of work that the staff went through to address some, I think, very legitimate issues that were raised by the, the community about some, some specific aspects of the contract, not the value of the services or the need for it, but just some contract administration issues that were pretty important. Thank you.
I also would like to thank BPI for coming forward with the information that I agree with Julia was warranted and necessary, given the degree of change that they have had as an organization, and Mr. Posey for being here for four hours tonight waiting for this moment, and then also to our school administrators who really provided a lot of information about the value of these services in their buildings and how they didn't feel that they could be met, or certainly didn't feel that they were being met in any other way or through any other contractors. So that's all important part of this process, too.
Correct. I also want to thank Iris Bell and Sean Brennan for being here from BPI, too.
Okay.
So they're, they've been sitting through in the back, and they've been very responsive, and they have owned the, the past issues, and we together are moving forward to provide services for our students.
Great, and I'm really pleased to see that.
Thank you. Also, we'll note that, just from a year ago, the templates for the contracts on sort of the, the end of cycle or the renewal cycle, that there's been a significant change in them, and just, I think they're much more substantive, we have a lot more information, and I know this is an issue also that was raised overall in the, in the audit, so I think we're on the path, just in the spirit of continuous improvement, that our community, there'll be a lot more transparency and information on results, especially as it relates to students. So thanks to the purchasing and contracting team, the, the student support team, and also our external partners for really, I think, providing a lot of transparency and accountability as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes staff doesn't know what to expect when they come up to the podium, but thank you for coming forward, Chief Martin.
It looks like you were waiting for something to drop.
The positive feedback and compliments.
I know. But.
And thank you to our partners, BPI, for your work.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Nick? Representative Paisler? Okay.
I would eye twitch at this point.
Okay, we will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Business agenda, oh, Director Moore and Anthony, are you still there?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
And, and you vote? Your vote is?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Was that a yes?
No, that was a yes, they were there. Is that a yes for your vote? She's on mute again.
Are you asking about our votes?
Yes.
Yes, both yeses.
Thank you. Okay, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Was student Representative Paisler voting?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Sparza Brown?
Yes.
Could I get clarification on resolution five eight oh four?
Five eight oh four.
On page ten of the business agenda? It's asking if it's affirming or rejecting.
Oh, it is, uh, 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 in support of the superintendent's recommendation, so that would be affirming.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you want to?
It was part of the business agendas, and we just voted yes, so.
We're good.
Yes. You don't need a roll call?
No.
Okay, yes.
Right, I just, I think if the language is, does it say affirm inferior?
The last sentence under resolution.
To affirm.
Affirms, yes.
Well, it says affirms or rejects.
That's why I wasn't wondering if we should vote.
I, I think we should clarify that that's the resolution you're voting on and re-vote.
Okay, yes. So let's vote on resolution five eight oh four. So all in favor of affirming the resolution, say yes.
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 Directors Moore and?
Did we have to yell?
Director Moore, are you still on the phone to vote on resolution?
Yes.
Was that to affirm it?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, for the vote of seven to zero to affirm, resolution five eight oh four.
Yes, we, we didn't actually have a motion and a second on eight oh four independently. I, I thought we were taking a different path, so we.
And we didn't actually pull it off.
Would you like me to move the amended resolution?
Yes.
I move the amended resolution number five eight oh four.
Second. Okay, amended resolution five eight oh four was moved by Director Berman Edwards, seconded by Director Constam. Any discussion? Okay, so now, all those that affirm the resolution, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, that do not affirm, they no. Abstentions? You can't vote on this. Okay, so the motion passed with a.
Did we hear?
Oh, Rita, Director Moore and Anthony?
We, we couldn't really hear any of that discussion, so I'm probably going to abstain because I, we couldn't follow the discussion.
How about if we restate it? Generally, our policy is if you're present, you should be voting. So we're, if you have in front of you resolution five eight oh four, we're affirming the superintendent's recommendation.
With, with a yes vote or not. With a, with a yes vote or not affirming with a no vote?
Okay, we're really not able to hear that, so we're going to have to abstain.
I can hear you're saying a number, but I cannot understand what number you're saying. What resolution are you considering?
Resolution 5804.
Can you hear the talking about Resolution 5804?
Yeah. Okay, read that. So how about we do it this way? We are following the recommendation of the staff. We are affirming the recommendation.
There we go.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Resolution 5804 passes?
Okay.
She affirmed.
Does that settle it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we have, are there any committee reports?
Point once, point twice. I have a committee, I have two committee reports, sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay, we had the Audit Committee met last week and, the week before last, and we had a couple of items report. We set up the template for the state audit with all the findings and the recommendations. We're populating the template and we'll be working closely, both with the Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations, but also on the other side of the district as well, since there's a number of recommendations that sort of span the larger organization. And so we have that in motion. We also had present, we have a community member who's serving on the Audit Committee. In addition, the Audit Committee is in the midst of the hiring process for our internal auditors. So that's the Audit Committee report. And then on the Policy and Governance Committee meeting, we're going to be meeting this Thursday, we'll have, again, a number of policy recommendations that we'll be considering, including the, any public comment relating to the field trips, travel, and off-campus activities, which has been amended recently, and we're in the middle of the public comment period. I also should report that based on a recommendation from board members and the student representative, that there was a communication that went out to all the principals and the principal's connection, or whatever the communication is that goes out every Tuesday, so to share the policy changes with school communities. And we already had a comment today from a teacher at one of our middle schools based on that communication. So I want to thank Roseanne from the Board Office and the communications staff for getting that out and for the principals to share with their school community. So I think this might be the start of a more robust mechanism by which we get feedback from our school communities on policies, there's going to be changes. So the, the agenda for the Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be, if it wasn't sound today, it'll go out first thing in the morning, and that's it.
Thank you. Student Rep?
Just real quick, I'm looking forward to meeting with community members and students going forward on the SRO suspension. We're also working, the District Student Council is working on our policy going forward and hope to add some more substantive additions to that. And I want to congratulate quite a few PPS schools, Franklin, Cleveland, Lincoln, and Grant for being out of the five, like, out of the, out of the top five, like, placement, placing at the Constitution State Competition just this past Saturday. So PPS schools are at, PPS high schools are at the very top of the bar, so a lot of fun to be there, and students, our students are doing a great job.
Yep, and both Lincoln and Grant will go to the National We the People Championship in April in DC.
Congratulations to them.
Just early warning, every, for the past a number of years, we've had a number of our schools participate in the Jazz in the Schools program, where volunteers from PDX Jazz come to school classrooms and play jazz music, talk about the historical and cultural context of jazz, and students then paint or create arts based on music that they're hearing. And then there's, so on February 19th, Students' Work will be on display at the Portland Art Museum. I get to be a judge again, I don't know if you're in, I know you went, went last year. It's, it's a great program and really fun to see the kids work, the students work. So I hope we can get something out, like, in the polls. I'll send this on to our comms team.
Thank you.
So there's just one other item from the Audit Committee that I want to share, is that there was a decision made because of the Secretary of State's recommendations that we, that looked at contracts that were below the 150 threshold, which we traditionally don't have on our business agenda. So our threshold is 150,000 and everything else, there's a delegation to the superintendent and staff. And because half the contracts that were actually reviewed through the state audit process were under 150,000, and the recommendation was that there should be sort of some sort of board oversight and review, we're going to be starting a process, and I want to just give people a heads up that we're not going to be approving contracts that are less than 150, but we're going to start having visibility to them, and we're going to start looking at what sort of criteria we should develop for contracts that are under that threshold. And we'll have a discussion with the Secretary of State's office and the Audit Division about what criteria we've established. I just want to let people know that that may be an adjustment that you'll see as a new list, but we won't be actually asking the board for contract approval.
How many of those are there in a year?
I think there's a thousand in total. So we had this discussion with the Audit Division about the number of them, because I think there's a little bit over 100 that we actually approve that are above the threshold. And when we queried whether the, they were recommending that we actually lower the threshold, that was not their recommendation necessarily, but they thought we should be looking at those contracts that have student impacts, perhaps ones that are direct negotiation contracts. So I think we're going to, we're going to, beginning the lists, we're not going to be approving them, and I think we'll be looking for trends and trying to come up with a set of recommendations that is a reasonable, provides a reasonable level of accountability and review of the, of the contracts where needed, but that does not get us into a full-time contracting board.
Okay, any other business? All right, the next meeting of the board will be a work session on February 5th, 2019. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on February 12th, 2019. This meeting is adjourned.